Good evening, we're gonna start our school board meeting tonight. I just want to let everybody know, I apologize if this is gonna be a little bit of a change in the agenda. We're gonna start with a pledge, we have a presentation from student council, and then we are gonna quickly leave the room for a minute. We have to do a very brief, non-public, it should probably only take no more than five minutes, and then we will come back and go right into public input. So, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that we had to move some things around. So with that, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we'd love to hear from student council.
We have Dr. Kim here for a video.
Awesome.
Insect.
My for you.
Hi, I am Dr. Kim, and I'm the 5th grade student council representative from Ms. Dela's class. Today I'm going to talk about what's happening at SMS. First things first, on Friday, April 14th, we had an SMS variety show. There were tons of acts, including gymnastics, dancing, singing, comedy, and more. It was a blast. The stage was so beautifully decorated and lit. It was great to see so many different talents. Another thing we are doing right now are community connections. These happen every Friday from 1:30 to 2:15. This is a great way to connect with people who have the same interests as you. Some of these passions include cooking, hiking, theater, knitting, flag football, science, coding, and more. The best part is that the students and staff decided what the projects would be. Students are in these sessions for two to three weeks. The other thing that is coming up on May 18th is a spring art showcase. You'll get to see amazing artwork from all grade levels. All donations will go to the SBCA, so come help out the SPA by showing up at 5:00 PM. After the art showcase, there will be a student showcase of learning in the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, great job.
Do you have any questions?
You did a great job, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna sneak away for a quick, non-public, and we're gonna go into non-public under our...
C.
Yeah, okay, RSA 91A 311C. I guess we need a roll call vote, so Eric?
I.
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 Okay, great, thank you. So, growing in under...
You're taking...
We will be right back. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back into session at 5:09, and we will continue on. I need a motion to either approve or not the personnel requests.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve both personnel requests.
Okay, that was John, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ken, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Yep. Alright, so we're gonna open it up to public input. So I think there was a form that went around, when you come up to address the board, would you just state your name and address? That's what we need, I believe?
Yep, yep.
Name and address, and we have 30 minutes, we'll set a timer, and everybody will receive three minutes to speak. So, do I have a board member that wants to watch the time?
I can time.
Yeah, would you mind? Thank you.
Am I doing the timer?
Yeah.
That's who usually does it.
Yeah, thank you. Sure. Are we have people filling out?
I'm just gonna leave it. Did you start it?
You go.
Okay. Hi, my name's Alexis Morton, 6 Spring Creek Lane. I'm gonna read a statement that was created last Monday. "We are Meg Fontaine, Misa Pignotaro, Emily Ward, and Lex Morton. Collectively, we have seven children at SMS. Here are some statistics we wanted to point out. Since 2000, there have been 783 school shootings with deaths or injuries at elementary or secondary schools. Mass shootings in the US have tripled since 2013. Robb Elementary and Sandy Hook Elementary now hold second and third place deadliest shootings in US history. There's been 150% increase in mass shootings since 2013. Given this alarming data, we're proposing that an armed Stratum safety officer, SRO, be present full-time at SMS. We recognize this won't fix the overarching problem, but it will keep our school safer. We're no longer comfortable having a pit in our stomach when our kids get on the bus. We're no longer comfortable with systems in place to react to an active shooter. Our children deserve to have a proactive system in place that would potentially deter an individual from going to SMS to harm. When faced with an insurmountable problem, the answer isn't to do nothing. It's time to gather together as parents and residents and put a system in place to protect our children and teachers. In the last five days, we've had 300 people in favor of this statement sign it, and there have been five in opposition. On a personal note, I just wanted to say that a few years ago, when this idea was presented, I disagreed with it. Having been a teacher and administrator, I did not feel like it was necessary and questioned if schools needed SROs. As much as we don't want to admit it, the number of school shootings per year are increasing year by year and decade by decade. One of the arguments I've heard against SROs is that it will scare the children. I disagree. It's an unfortunate reality, but in the world we live in, we encounter armed security during travel, at concerts, or sporting events. We see them in federal buildings, banks, and trains. It can be off-putting sometimes and jarring to see them, but when my five and seven-year-old asks, "Mommy, why is that person here?", my response is always the same: "They're here to keep us safe." I don't get into 9/11 or talk about mass shootings. I tell them the easiest, most concrete answer I can. Children learn what we teach them. If we put positive, responsible SROs in our schools, children will learn to have positive relationships with them. When I was teaching, I taught very low-functioning children with autism. Some were nonverbal. I didn't shield them from the harsh realities of the world. I brought the information to a level that they could understand, made them feel safe, and taught them how to live in that world. It's our responsibility as a society to keep our children safe. It's the police's responsibility to keep our communities safe. We trust police officers in various other aspects of our everyday life to keep us, fellow citizens, and our property safe. Our schoolchildren deserve the same level of protection. Thank you."
Thank you. Misa?
Misa Pignotaro, 23, Dumbarton Oaks. "After recently learning that Greenland, Hampton, Newmarket, CMS, and EHS all have full-time school resource officers, and Portsmouth is in a similar phase we are in Stratum, I became more fearful than I already was. As in my eyes, this puts SMS at more of a risk with no SRO. And to clarify, Officer Amanda, who we all know and love, is full-time at CMS. After sharing our petition with the community in support of a safer SMS, a concern was raised that parents did not want their kids to be fearful of an armed guard. And yes, I agree, nor do I. Parents were also worried that an SRO would be in charge of disciplining our kids and behavior management. The role of an SRO, taken from the National Association of School Resource Officers, is to provide safe learning environments, provide valuable resources to the school staff, foster positive relationships with youth, and develop strategies to resolve problems while protecting all students. Here are three statements we received from parents with full-time SROs in their school. I wanted to answer your post about the safety officer at GCS. His name is Officer Drew, and he may have started when my oldest was in first grade. He does a wonderful job with the kids, they absolutely love him. I think his presence not only makes the kids feel safe, but also comfortable around police officers, which is super important. His police car is parked out front, which makes me feel safe. Honestly, we got extremely lucky with our police officer Drew. He lives in Greenland and loves the community. He helps our coaching teams and is at all the local events. In this day and age, I think all schools should have a resource officer. And another statement, Officer Drew is not a safety officer, he is a school resource officer. Does he make our school safer? Absolutely. But what he does is much greater. He is a mentor, a big brother, a coach, a friend, a security blanket, and most importantly, a resource. If a student feels unsafe out of school, they can go to him and help. He will help them to get the resources they need. It's the best $15 per year out of our entire tax bill. Think about that. Is one child being helped, protected, cared for, or mentored worth $15 a year on your tax bill? It is for me. And last statement, I was at a cookout with a bunch of Stratum moms last night and was hearing about the research that SROs do more harm than good. I really think it's not a one-size-fits-all. In Greenland, we have a full-time SRO, and he's absolutely amazing. He is the one that kids want on their volleyball team, basketball team, and anything else they are playing. He has organized kickball games and sleds with them at recess. He encourages community and leads by example. He is the head coach of the baseball team, and reminds my son not to forget to bring his backpack when he heard me complaining about it the day prior. He's a major asset to our school, and I do not know any parent, including parents of special-needs children, that have ever thought it was doing our children harm to have him in our school. As a mom of two kids at SMS and a former first-grade teacher, I ask that you support a full-time SRO."
Thank you.
Megan Fontaine?
Meg Fontaine, 57, Dumbarton Oaks Road. Hello, my name is Meg Fontaine, and I have a 2nd grader here at SMS and three other children who will eventually come to this school. I am in support of having an armed resource officer be placed at SMS year-round as the number of mass school shootings grow on a daily basis. While SMS surely has good proactive safety measures in place currently, this is not enough to protect our children and faculty. Just last month, six children and faculty were killed at Covenant Elementary School in Tennessee. There was no resource officer in place, and while it took officers only 10 minutes to arrive, it was still 10 minutes too long. Less than a year ago, at Robb Elementary School in Texas, 21 children and staff were killed. There was no resource officer in place, and it took over an hour for police to respond and end the massacre. Additionally, Sandy Hook had no resource officer and a police response time of 20 minutes. Sandy Hook and Robb Elementary now hold second and third place for deadliest school massacres in US history, elementary schools. Imagine the lives that could have been saved had an armed resource officer been on premise. I wanted to share a personal story here. For three weeks in fall 2002, the county that I grew up in, in northern Virginia, was seated in fear as the Washington DC sniper picked off people at random all around us. At only 14-years-old, we had to practice weekly active shooter drills out of precaution. Our family and friends were terrified, we were terrified. One day, a code blue was issued, and our high school and all other area schools were sent into lockdown, as the sniper had just killed another person just a few times over. We weren't allowed to leave the school gym while anxious parents were frantically trying to get ahold of us. We had two on-staff resource officers in our high school, and I will say that even though this was a situation to be frightful of, I never once felt unprotected. Our resource officers were always the friendly face in school, often seen conversing with kids and joining in on the fun during assemblies, much like Officer Amanda does at CMS. Just four years later, I went off to Boston for college, while most of my friends went to area universities. We were all excited for new beginnings, but just one month before finishing our first year of college, I received a frantic call from my mom, and the words I heard changed my life that day. I immediately tried to get ahold of my two closest friends at Virginia Tech. One of them responded that they were safe, but the other called me in hysterics, screaming that she couldn't find her then-boyfriend. She called back later that evening to tell me he was dead. Sorry. 30 students and faculty, all killed within 10 minutes. Virginia Tech was and still remains, sorry, the most deadliest school massacre in United States history. I attended that funeral, and I held my inconsolable friend as she sat through his wake and funeral in devastating mourning. I watched this man's father and brother carry his mother out of the funeral home in absolute anguish over the death of her son. I returned to school and couldn't focus in class as I replayed the funeral, and all its emotional rawness over and over in my head, wondering how those parents, family, and friends would move on from such a horrific loss. We, our generation, the parents that are raising... Sorry. These beautiful children in Stratum Memorial School, the faculty that is teaching those children, we have all endured devastating loss in our lifetime. We have seen so much global tragedy. We cannot stand by and watch our children get killed anymore. Myself, sorry, myself, and I am sure many of the parents and faculty at SMS want change. We're tired, tired of keeping up, tired of worrying, tired of having our hands tied, tired of being told there's nothing we can do, and tired of fighting. I want to send my kids off to school in the morning without thinking twice, without worry, without guilt that we haven't done enough. I have said my piece today. The decision is up to you, but the guilt is no longer on my hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Ward?
29 Barker Road. I have two sons at SMS, a kindergartner, and a 2nd grader. In the wake of yet another horrific mass shooting in Nashville three weeks ago, and the frightening shooting threat in Portsmouth just one week ago, we as a small community must come together to take action before tragedy strikes here in Stratum. This is not fear-mongering. This is the harsh reality of the world we live in. We do not want to be the next Nashville, Uvalde, or Parkland. We cannot sit idly waiting for our government to enact stricter gun laws or solve the mental health crisis. We as parents need to wake up. The time for action is now. While SMS has certain security protocols in place, in the face of an active shooter situation, it is not enough. We need to allocate proper funding to increase security at SMS, and that includes a school resource officer. School resource officers are an important piece of the puzzle for a safe and secure school. They help coordinate and implement safety plans, provide guidance to struggling students, serve as role models, and establish positive relationships between law enforcement and the community. They are the last line of defense between students and teachers when attacks occur. SROs are vital and most effective when they are part of a behavioral threat assessment team that brings school officials, mental health professionals, and law enforcement together to proactively prevent tragedy and ensure the safety of all. We have heard concerns that police in schools cause more harm than good. These concerns are valid, and we are not dismissing them. In our opinion, a school resource officer should have a primarily protective role and be answerable to the school community, school leaders, and receive specialized training in working within an elementary school population. I personally had a school resource officer during my elementary school years in Northampton, and I can tell you, he was a valued, treasured member of the school community. He was not scary, he was not punitive, he made us feel safe, and served as a role model for a lot of kids. I have heard pushback that an SRO will not be able to stop an active shooter alone, but we cannot say this with any certainty. I can tell you with overwhelming certainty that I would feel much better about sending my 5-year-old and 8-year-old sons to school, knowing that an SRO is here and knowing that a police car is parked out front every day. We are asking for more, more security, more protection, we are asking for more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Peterson and Scott Alexander?
Hi, I live at 7 Wedgewood Drive in Stratum, sorry, I'm not this short. Look, I don't have a prepared speech, and I don't have children here, I don't have anyone who works here, and so I don't want this to be a divisive issue. We're a community, I think we all want the same thing. We want our kids, we want everyone who works here to be safe. Because I don't really have anybody who works here in the building or who goes here as student, I will support whatever the majority of the parents and the people who work here want. I am not in favor of a resource officer. I am a retired teacher of 30-plus years, I have a doctorate in education, I've done a lot of research into this subject, and they do more harm than good. I also am concerned that if we hire somebody, it is something that makes us feel better, but it doesn't address the problem, and then we won't do what's needed to address the problem. There are lots of ways, you know, that we can look at, but it's gonna take a lot more work. It involves the community, it involves us coming together, it involves us getting to know each other, maybe even perimeter walks of community members, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but we need to think of solutions that actually could work. I'm trying to imagine one police officer with somebody as a mass shooter who wants to get into the building and wants to do damage, and this person cannot be everywhere at once. In Florida, we saw, you know, they have rules, they can't come up against overwhelming firepower, so is it even going to help? I'm concerned that if we do this, it's a false solution, and it will prevent other things from happening. If it doesn't, great, but I am concerned about it. So I would like people in my position to work with folks in another position. If we have a police officer here, I will support that, but can we also do more? And that's my position today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Alexander?
Scott Alexander, 7 Wedgewood Drive, Stratum. I am not in favor of the resource officer. Parkland School, Columbine, Santa Fe, all had resource officers, all had mass shootings. Just because you have a resource officer doesn't mean it's going to prevent a shooting. So, as communities, we want to look within our communities on ways of providing more mental health for those who need it, you know, mental health services to those who need it, for communities to be more actively engaged as citizens with each other. And we got lots of police officers with lots of guns out there, but shootings are continuing to grow and be in our media day in and day out, and it's scary. It's scary for all of these parents here who have children that come to the schools. It's scary for the teachers, for the custodians that have to come to a school, and all you hear every day on TV is, "Oh, there's been another shooting," whether it's at a school or some other venue. So, having more guns around a school isn't necessarily going to stop a mass shooter. So, I don't have the answer, but I think there are possibly other ways that might be more effective in keeping our children safe and each other safe in our communities by our communities working more together as citizens who like each other, and it's not a Republican, a Democrat, or any other kind of thing, it's people who have common goals and want the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Lacass?
Sticking with the theme of today, I've got two safety items that I'd like to discuss. The first is regarding buses. Obviously, our driver's primary focus is on the road, which allows a lot to happen behind their backs. The freedom that children have on buses is something that not all of them ages 5 to 11 can handle. The result is bullying incidents, threats, et cetera, which unfortunately, two of my three children that go to the school have been on the receiving end of. Additionally, the noise levels on all buses pose a significant safety concern, and I would recommend that the board consider putting bus monitors on each bus. If this isn't a hired position, maybe this is something that we look to for the student body, a way to promote good behavior and responsibility in the 4th and 5th grade classes. And second, I'd like to point out the incredible impact that the current town's school resource officer has had on the entire community, including the kids here at SMS. Did you know she's mostly at CMS, but she's only at SMS one partial day a week? Now imagine the massive impact a full-time school resource officer could make in addition to providing safety if needed. We all know how valuable time is during an emergency. SMS is located eight minutes away from the Stratum Police Station. I'd like to use the next minute of my time in silence, so we can all feel just how long one of those eight minutes would be during an emergency. wait during an emergency? Other area schools that agree one minute is too long are own CMS and EHS. I strongly support the recommendation made prior that the SMS school board immediately take the next step to introducing a position for a full-time school resource officer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan Parrish?
Hello. Megan Parrish, you guys haven't moved this really close. Last time, it's always back there. Yeah, one story I wanted to share real quick, because there's, people say that it's traumatic to have an SRO. My son, I asked him about his experience with an SRO in the lunch period, because she comes in often, and I said, "Well, what do you guys talk about?" You know, because he said, "She goes to every single table to talk to each student." And he said, "Well, I asked her how elephants breathe." And he thought it was hysterical that elephants breathe through their trunks. So, it was a joyful, funny, heartwarming experience that he's getting from that. So I don't have much to say, other than what's already been said in support of an SRO, but I just want to say, let's take the right precautions and guard our children the same way we guard government buildings, courthouses, hospitals, banks, politicians, and airports. After 9/11, we armed the pilots. I fly with armed pilots and federal air marshals often. It's not every flight, although I wish it was. Which plane do you want to be on in case something happens? Why isn't it the same when it comes to protecting our children and our teachers? They are the most precious people in our lives and should be protected as such. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Sadaway?
I don't have a speech either, but, and I am not American, I want to note this, but I've lived in America 20 years. I have two children, one at SMS and one at CMS, the one at CMS was here for three years. I discovered that we didn't have an officer last week, full-time. And, you know, I love being here, I love our teacher, I love the kids, you know, you come in the building, the energy, it's fun, and I could not imagine being on that list that, you know, have those tragic events like happened two weeks ago in Nashville. Being foreign national, I actually study guns, I actually work for the Defense Complex in this country, and, you know, I've looked at events, I am not, you know, I haven't studied it, but I studied recently, but I studied it as a student. You know, mental health, the number of guns in this country, and I have nothing against it. I feel that people have the right to hunt, have the right, you know, to go shooting if they want to. So, obviously, you know, I feel that the Second Amendment is not going away, it's something that everybody has to respect, and, but it is an epidemic, and it's been 30 years, and nothing is moving. We tell our kids to hide under tables, to go into closets. That's what is told today, and we rely on our teacher. You know, every school shooting, who comes in the news? The heroes are the teachers, or a kid that, you know, save, or the janitor, or whomever is there to save the kids. And from time to time, you know, some of those school shootings are not happening because there is an SRO there, or the disaster is limited because you have someone on staff. I'm shaking, because this is something I believe, you know, if we cannot do anything but put kids in closet and under-table, something needs to be done. So I've heard that there was no SRO at SMS, I was like, "Oh." You know, we live in the country, I think we're seven minutes away from the police station. You know, one minute, seven minutes, plus, you know, whatever needs to happen for people to intervene, so I want to keep those people safe, because they deserve it. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Wessels?
Did you mark the time? Let me start. Yep, okay, thank you. Will you just let us know? Thanks. We have five minutes left. Oh, thank you.
Let's see, go this way. So, I mean, I think the last few years have shown us what the harm you can do if you overreact to a problem. So look, if we had one school shooting in the last 20 years and one child died, that would be a tragedy. So any number of children dying is a tragedy, but we should be practical about the real risk to our children. Over the last 20 years, 20 years plus since they've kept the data, the average number of people killed at a school, adults and children, is four a year. That's gone up a lot, so the last three years, it's 15, and that's horrible. That's 15 horrible deaths a year. But every year, 62 people die from bee and wasp stings. 4,000 people drowned. 4,000 people drowned. 20,000 children get killed in cars. So is it a statistical risk, really, 14 deaths? Our children, teaching our children that they should be afraid of this, that this is something to fear, I think is a bad message to give them. And I think, I mean, if we're reacting to this, then where are our bee sting kits? Where are all sorts of things that are much higher priority? So as horrible as these deaths are, they're not a major risk to our children. And to convince our children that this is something they should fear, which eventually that's what the message is, that's not a real risk. They are far more in danger at a, you know, making sure that there's somebody watching them in the pool, that's much more important than it is to have a school security officer, especially in a school system like ours. We are not a city school system. And so, yes, we should keep our kids safe, but I think we have to be very careful not to overreact and not to put fear on our children of something that's not a high likelihood of happening at all. So.
Thank you. You have time for one more?
That was everybody on the list. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I don't have anything prepared. My name is Katie McCann-odyma. I live at 49 River Road, and I want an officer in the school. My kids have benefited from a relationship with Ms. Amanda and from the times that we have offered them the opportunity to interact with officers in their life. I think it's a great benefit to make sure that kids know that they shouldn't necessarily run in the opposite direction of an officer. You know, there's all these other things that are happening, not just school shootings. There's kids who are afraid, just in general, of police officers. Police officers should not be scary. They should be the people that are there when we need somebody. They should be the person who, when you're sent home, when you're sent home from the hospital with a child with only two chambers in her heart instead of four, and the only number that you have to call is 911 if her heart is going to fail on you while it's your watch, and those people are there. Our kids should have an opportunity in their lifetime to see officers in a good light. They see a lot of crummy officers in the news. They see a lot of crummy officers on television programs. They should have somebody that's in their lives, that's a good officer, that they can build a healthy relationship with. I think that there should be an officer here if anything bad were to happen in our schools, and I think there should be an officer here for all the good opportunities that they could bring to children's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless there's someone else that wants to... Is there, we could allow one other person if everybody...
Okay, I'm going to say a few words on this. I think this is an incredibly important topic, and it's one that we need to have a lot of discussion on. I know that the Safety and Security Committee is meeting, is it tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
To talk about this and all things school safety, but this in particular. And, you know, that committee is representatives from each board, so all six towns has board members there. Senior leadership is there. Principals are there, and then also Fire and Police from all the different towns. So they're going to be talking about this, discussing it. Ken sits on that committee, and so he can come back to us in May and present, you know, everything that was shared and all the data. And I think my recommendation would be to put it on the May meeting to hear that data and have a bigger conversation. I think, again, it's incredibly important, and I feel like I take this very seriously, and I'm sure everybody else does that sits up here. But I think it has to be a process, and we have to look at all the information. We also have to look at how it impacts the budget. We just passed our budget. So there's all sorts of things that are going to be involved in this. But that's my two thoughts on it. If somebody else wants to speak to it quickly, I'm fine with that.
Like, just so everyone knows, so tomorrow, the Safety and Security Committee, it is a closed-door meeting because we do discuss actual safety calls that we don't want out in public for obvious reasons. But just so everyone is aware, this is an actual designated line item on the agenda, this exact topic. So it is going to be reviewed tomorrow. You know, to Kate's point, you know, all the local representatives of Fire and Police for all the SCU towns are there, and so it is going to be something that is discussed to figure out how to move forward, so.
Do you want me to talk about how...
Yeah, actually. That's great.
So for budgets, we create budgets in the fall for them to be approved in a public hearing in January, then to go to, well, you're not a deliberate town, but they're prepared in the fall for the following school year. So they're prepared a whole year in advance. And in order for your tax rate to be set, it's completely dependent on the budget. So the way your tax rate is set is the budget that we prepare minus the revenues that you bring in, which is your adequacy aid, any money you pay for lunch, various sorts of revenues. The delta between that is what's raised in taxes, and it's set to clear at zero. So there is no additional money in the budget because we build a needs-based budget to be very fiscally responsible. So in order for us to fit an SRO, we would have to take from other line items because we're not allowed to overexpend that bottom line. So we would have to forego something else at the decision of the school board to be able to afford the officer. And if you want to take a look at how much SROs cost, I would encourage you to go to SAU 16 Budgets and Elections, and if you go under the Cooperative section, line items in the budget are designated for the SRO. So you'll see exactly how much the SRO costs for the middle school and exactly how much it costs for the high school. You can do a Ctrl+F on that PDF and type in SRO, and it'll bring you right to that line item. So if you do want an SRO at SMS, I would encourage you to go through the budget cycle, which this fall, we will be creating the budget for the 24-25 school year. So the budget for this coming school year has already been set and voted on.
Are you allowed to accept fundraising for a position like that until the budget's funded?
Public comment is done. Can email any questions?
Yeah, well, I can look into that, and we can report back out on that, for sure. Does it, I have a question.
Sure.
It will also affect the town budget, correct? Because the officer would have to be employed by the town, or no?
We'd have to discuss that with the town.
Yes. No, no, you're on the select board, so you...
So the way Officer Armand works...
Probably need a break or something. Do you want to come up? Yeah.
The way Officer Armand works is that the school pays her salary and the town pays all of her benefits, so, which end up being, I think, 30% to 40% above what her salary is. So, you know, when we start talking about the budgeting process, or you guys decide you want to work with this or not, we would have to have a conversation about whether the town wants to do that again, and you have to think things like vehicle and all that.
So what you'll see in the cooperative budget is our portion of Officer Armand.
And the town works exactly like you described with the budget. So it's easier to do it through the actual budget process because by law, you can't overexpend so much in a line item, so.
That's helpful. Thank you.
But I think the point of all this is just to let, we hear you. Conversations have already started of, you know, what we can and can't. But just so everyone knows, it is not as simple as tomorrow, we snap our fingers and do something, because we are bound by laws that we have to work through. So just so everyone knows, we are working on it. We do hear you. We do have processes that we are required to go through. So I just don't want anybody to think that, you know, they show up, say what they said, which the commentary was beautiful, but we do have to go through steps to figure out, you know, the how and the what, and so we are working on it.
Does anybody else have anything they want to speak to add, or...
No, I just wanted to echo that and just say thanks to everyone for coming. You know, I'm proud to be part of this community and thinking about students and teachers, and appreciate your comments tonight.
So, thank you, everyone. Well, that will close public input and move on to the agenda items. And just so everybody knows, we will put that on the May agenda to have that conversation. Thank you. Okay. So with that, we're going to move on to approval of minutes. Does anybody have any corrections or changes to the May 15 public or non-public board meetings, if we can pass them together? We could do that.
I do not have any.
Nope.
Nope. You see anything? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes for March 15?
Yes, I'm moved.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sophie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you an aye, Jen?
Aye, sorry.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the superintendent report.
Sure. To start out, Kate was gracious enough to sign off on the general assurances, so we'll bring this back for Dr. Aspel to sign. The general assurances have to be presented at your board meeting so that you can expend your, any federal funds for the following year. We usually get indication late June of what our federal funds for both state and for federal funds will be. So once Kate has that, then we'll enter it into the system, and then we'll be eligible to get our funds, write our descriptions so that we can use the monies here through our different grants for the administration works through. So thank you, Kate, on that.
Financial report.
Okay, so hopefully that description I gave before was helpful.
Yeah, it was helpful.
Okay, good. So the manifests are over there, right underneath. Perfect. Awesome. And then, so in your board pack is a current year financial. All the changes in the upper left-hand corner are from the prior month. So we did have some additional costs related to the aides and MOA. The unfilled positions at this point in time, we eliminate all unfilled positions, assuming they're not actually going to get hired. We've been decreasing it slowly over time, just assuming that when we hire someone, they would fulfill the duties to the end of the year, but now we've taken that out. We did have some additional expenses for the operations of plant, which I've listed here. And then for support services, this is my exciting news. So when we built this budget, we get the guaranteed maximum rate, the GMR from Health Trust, our health insurance company, and they tell us the rate so we can, the maximum rate, so that we can build our budgets. And they had quoted 15.6, and so it actually came in lower at 10.6. But the reason this affects this year's budget just a little bit is because our teachers, when we pay them, we actually kind of prepay July and August with this year's salary, so they get the new rate in July and August, so that's why it has a slight impact on this year. But next year, you'll see a nice savings with that. So what I did here is, on the left-hand side, this expense matches within your board pack, but we've also drafted the letter to the trust for the safety and security items that we had done to the tune of $75,194. That's why when you, in the upper right-hand corner, I added that back in. So we don't have that money yet, so we haven't released, relieved the funds in the actual accounting system, but I added that back in, in the upper right-hand corner, so you can see the projected fund balance. Oh, did you want to say something?
No, yeah, and there'll be more to that, because that was for part of it, right?
Yep.
The rest of it, when that comes in, there'll be an additional piece that'll go to the trust fund to get back. Remember, what you approved is not matching that amount, because that's the down closet, and then we have to wait for the full thing to pay the rest of it.
Yep, so we can, when we request things from the trust, we have to provide a copy of the purchase order, a copy of the check, so we have to pay for it first, and then the trust reimburses us. So with the additional sources of revenue that you have, and also, I just want to point out one additional source of revenue. If you remember last year, we went after the computer, the ECF money from the federal government. We didn't have it at the time the books closed, and honestly, we weren't entirely sure we were, we didn't want to bank on it necessarily getting it in the tax rate. And so we actually did receive it just a few weeks ago, $36,000. So that's great. That's an additional source of revenue this year. So with your extra revenue, the relief from the trust, and the expense you have in the board pack right now, the ending fund balance would be $179,205.
That's great.
Mm-hmm. And that's before any additional...
Everybody can breathe.
That's before any additional relief from the trust, and if we wanted to choose not to go back for that trust for that second piece, we don't have to, because we approved up too. So we can make that decision later, just before June 30. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Molly, can you just talk a little bit about food service? I know we're all negative, but...
Yeah, so I actually...
Why we're negative, and...
Oh, sure, yeah, okay. So the Food Service Fund, so if you look at your, legally, we have to keep the Food Service Fund in a different fund. And when you vote, you vote for the Food Service Fund and the General Fund together to get your total appropriation. So the Food Service Fund does operate separately, and there's three sources of revenue to that. It's your federal fund, your federal reimbursement, your state reimbursement, and what parents pay. The expenses in your Food Service Fund are all the cost of the food that we serve, any cost of serving ware, whether you're serving on paper plates, or plastic forks, or whatever. The cost to maintain the kitchen, so if the stove was to fail, the cost to repair the stove, the cost of all the salaries of the individuals that work in the Food Service Department, including their salaries and benefits. So there's a lot more than just food. So when we set the price of food, is it $3.25 per lunch here? We, in order to net zero, you have to clear the expenses. And so what happens is, a lot of the smaller schools, I think the only school that continuously makes money is the cooperative due to the size, you have to bring in enough revenue to offset your expenses. So even in this case where the Food Service Fund, if your Food Service Fund isn't over budget, if you don't have enough money to, that you're bringing in to offset the expenses, legally, you can't leave that Food Service Fund in a lost position. So what we have to do is, the accounting rules don't let you transfer expense over to the General Fund, so you have to add revenue to the Food Service Fund with the corresponding expense to the General Fund, so that entry is net neutral, and it brings the overall, I guess, looking at expense only, up, but it's bringing the revenue up at the same amount.
Okay.
I wrote up a nice thing for a smaller district that I could send to you.
Okay.
Where I drew it all out in a little memo, and I also attached the federal and state reimbursement rates.
Yeah, okay.
So what I can do is tomorrow, I can send that to you guys.
Yeah.
I'd love to see that, too.
Yeah, and so it's, I just did an example on how you can see it. And if you end in a positive Food Service Fund balance, so last year we did, because we had what we call free feed, but it's not, wasn't really free. It was basically the federal government paying the parent portion. So it was free to parent because the federal government was paying that. So for us operating the school, it was no different here. It was just who was paying us was different. And so when parents didn't have to pay, we saw a lot more children eating. So we could, when you have more meals to serve, you can create them at a lower cost per meal. And when you have less children eating, your meal cost is going to be higher per meal. And so that's why every year, we look at the meal service lunch prices and breakfast prices. Does that help explain a lot of... And I can definitely send you that memo I put together, and it outlines it all. And if you end in a positive position, you actually get to carry that forward.
Okay.
It doesn't return in the tax rate.
Sounds good.
Were you thinking about if we wanted to change something, like the implications of how you do that, planning financially for it?
Yeah. Well, just because it also just looks, you know, just trying to figure out how it looks and how it works. I didn't realize that it was only free to parents that the school continued to pay last year.
Well, I mean, it was, the school made the meals, so we had to buy the food.
Yeah, right.
The only thing that changed was who's paying us.
Yeah.
So it wasn't that they were handing out free bread and eggs. We actually had, our processes didn't change here. Our buying processes didn't change. It was just who was paying us. And when parents didn't have to pay, a lot, we saw a lot more kids eating.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions on financial? I had a question, a couple of questions about the budget. It says, New Hampshire Tuition Private, 140, can I say numbers?
So that's special education tuition.
Okay. And then school board dues? I didn't know what that was about.
So I don't know if you want to talk about the School Board Association dues?
Yeah, each year, we, you have dues that we pay out to the New Hampshire School Boards Association, which helps us with any policies. So the policy briefs we get, the end of each year, we get sample policies that we can help out, that we drive through the Policy Committee. If there is any situations for trainings, or a situation comes here, we could, we would work with at a much reduced rate with New Hampshire School Boards to use their legal services for you as a board. So that's the protection the board has through the dues that you pay to New Hampshire School Boards Association.
Gotcha. Thanks.
And Sophie, if you ever want to sit and talk about the budget, I did it with Kate last year. I don't know if that was super helpful. And Sophie, if you ever wanna sit and talk about the budget, I did it with Kate last year. I don't know if that was super helpful. We met at a park while our kids played.
I thought it was very helpful.
And I'm super available, so whenever you want, let me know. And we can walk through how it works, the mechanics, and the process, the timeline, and I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have budget, finance questions?
So, I'll just collect the manifest, and I have to run to baseball.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks for that. So, we'll move on to the board reports. So, we'll start with building committee.
Thank you.
For everybody.
Yeah. All right, so the building committee met, I guess, last week? And we had a great meeting. So, we're still meeting with sort of an ad hoc committee of SMS admin team, Kate and I, Tim, the architect Chris. And so, what we really did last meeting was review the plans and make some modifications. So, we're really thinking about things like, where do we want the entrance for the school? What do we want our gym to look like? You know, how do we picture this gym existing in a, in a future building? What does the library space look like? So, like, the library of the future doesn't really look like this room that we're in. And so, how do we make that the most useful sort of place for students, for professional learning, for teachers? So, we really talked a lot about all of that. We set up some regular meetings with that ad hoc committee. And what we're doing now is sort of waiting for a revision of the plans. So, we're still kinda going back and forth and really trying to picture what our perfect school looks like. And so, the, the last comment I just really wanted to make was, just to recognize that SMS admin team for, you know, we sit in these meetings, and like, their walkie-talkies are going, and it's just like, it's a huge amount of work that they're undertaking. And, you know, just really appreciate the sort of feedback that they're giving this future school, which we're really excited about. So, that's the building committee.
Thank you. Policy committee, Sophie?
Yep. Can I borrow your computer? My printouts are at home.
Oh, you wanna see the policies? Yep.
Yeah. So, I thought I would just read their summaries provided, which is very helpful. So, I'll just read those, and then I wanted to give a slightly longer update on one of them. So, for the policy of the health, education, and exemption from instruction, this policy is required per RSA 186 and provides requirement in the content of health instructional programs. In addition, the policy outlines the notification requirements and opt-out process for parents and guardians should they not want their child to participate in the instruction. Any questions about that policy? The next policy is about teaching about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. This policy is required and is part of the specific policies regarding violations of RSA 126-k8, youth access to and use of tobacco products such as A, health education to address tobacco use, RSA 189, and prohibited minors from using or possession tobacco products, RSA 126. The policy requires the district to provide comprehensive list of local, regional, and statewide drug and alcohol counseling and treatment programs available to district students in the student handbooks. Any questions about that one?
I just had a question for Kate. And Kate, what, what are we doing here for, as far as that, like, drug? I mean, obviously, SMS doesn't have, like, a drug problem, but I'm thinking going on, like, preparing the kids that are going on to the middle school or going off somewhere else, what are we having, these conversations, or do we?
So, some of this is part of our school guidance working, but it's not really focused on this level. So, like, there's conversations sort of just about, like, adolescents and stuff, and we do our puberty talks. We talk about those sort of things, and like, peer pressure, and what, I mean, if you get older, there's certainly conversations about, like, in your home, pill bottles should be kept safe. You don't go near those, like, that kind of stuff. It's much more broader, not as targeted as this, because it's developmentally, it's not necessarily appropriate for them. That's more, that stuff is safe for, once they enter sixth grade, and it's more intensive in sixth grade than here. Here, it's much more like just home safety around prescription drugs or things like that. Or, just because your parents have it, doesn't mean you should be, that kind of stuff. It's not targeted at just this.
Okay. I was just curious.
Thank you. Yeah, good question. The next policy is selection of removal of library materials. Although this is an optional policy, our library media specialists receive inquiries from the public regarding how the library collection is selected and reviewed. This policy provides that information in a consistent manner and outlines resources that are used by the staff. And that's the one that I thought I would, is most relevant to SMS, so I thought I would expand upon it a little bit, and just read quickly, because when I saw it, I was like, oh, removal of, uh, library materials. So, I thought it'd be helpful just to read a little bit more about it. And basically, the, here are the bullet points under that for removal of library materials. So, materials may be withdrawn from the collection at the discretion of the library media specialist if they are worn, damaged, or in poor physical condition, may no longer be supported by circulation statistics, contain content which is outdated or no longer accurate, are biased, patronizing, or portray stereotypes, no longer support the mission or curriculum of the school, duplicate information which is no longer needed, are superseded by new or revised information, and/or are not selected in accordance with the general selection criteria. Any questions about that? Okay, and then, I think that's it. Is there one more, or is that it? Two more, okay. Daily physical activity, this is required policy per ED 306-04 and ED 310. The text of the policy mirrors what is outlined in those regulations. Please note that the policy does not require all of the practices be accomplished inside the school day, but rather that the board/district recommend the practices to students and families. Yeah, this one was kind of just recommendations. There's no, like, you must, yada, yada, yada. And then, the last one is distance education. This policy is required for any district that intends to offer distance education, either for snow days or individual students. This includes remote learning days. The policy also outlines the considerations needed in an individualized distance education program, as well as the rights and responsibilities regarding students not making educational progress. And that's it. Any questions about any of those policies?
Are we thinking we wanna pass some of these, or use some of them as a first read, or what's, what is everybody's thoughts? Or make, or somebody wanna make a motion to pass them together?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pass all fi- five policies?
Yes. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ken, thank you. All in favor?
Can we do discussion on?
Yeah, just, sure.
I'm, I'm not, I feel like I wanna first read on the library, to be honest with you.
Okay. I'm also just curious about that opt-out for health education, like, how does that work in reality?
Yeah.
Are people doing it, or?
And are people notified that that education is going to be happening, so that they know what they're?
So, right now, when we do our three talks, we send a lot home to families and notify them that we'll be doing it. They can reach out if they prefer that. We can provide an alternative setting. It's very similar to, like, when we do New Hampshire Sastas, and we send something home, like, to their child. I would typically, we don't typically have anybody, but then a couple of people inquire about the resources, and which we've shared. And even in the letters, we say, use of the videos, use of the resources.
Yeah.
So, families are aware of what materials we use for discussion around that. But that's really the only time that we hear about them.
Yeah. So, it's just the fourth, fifth?
Just fourth and fifth.
That, okay, the, no, nothing else that you guys talk about? Nothing? Yeah, Andre would talk about nothing like that? Yeah, okay.
Parents have access to a full catalog of books in the library, so they have to spread on our website. It's in Alexander, because you have a single book that's in our library. So, families that wanna know what's available in our library or not available in our library, that the, the piece about that would help this related to their, it was born in five years ago.
Okay.
Eric, do you wanna talk about the library, or?
Um, I mean, I cer- I certainly can. I, I'm very much for free speech and intellectual curiosity. I do believe that there's something to be said for developmental and age appropriateness. It sounds like, and that's what I didn't feel comfortable voting, is that it, it sounds like that's at the discretion of the librarian, generally speaking, at the recommendation of whomever. Am I, am I understanding that wrong?
So, I can offer that.
Yeah.
So, this policy was written by our lead library media specialists across the district. We did not have this policy, so how we were bringing books into the library, it's based on the American Library Association, and there is criteria, so it would be age-specific, is this book. And so, there's a number of criteria that they work through, through the American Library Association, to make sure that books that are in this library are age-appropriate, do not, are not biased in any way. So, it's, it's very vetted, and it was written by library media specialists to give more guidance to the work that they do and how books are brought in, and then when we remove books from the library, what's that process? So, that's what's outlined here. It's one of the most succinct policies I've seen, because they wrote it. So, that's where it comes, it came from, and that's the rationale behind it. So, I don't know if that helps with you for your decision tonight, but it, that's the, where it came from and the rationale of why it came.
Yeah, thank you for that, Chris. I think, I mean, the way, the way I think about it is, you know, parents have different, they're gonna have different viewpoints on what materials are appropriate for their child. There are some things that are probably, where if a child has complete autonomy, and I think this is, to me, it feels less gray in the elementary level. But there's gonna be where, if a child has autonomy to, to select something, is there any form of, like, you know, it's almost like when we have movies, we say something's G, or something's PG, right? Because we're at least trying to identify that there is potential content in here that requires parental guidance. I mean, that's the way we always kinda looked at it. And then there's things that we say that's R, right? You can, you can view it, but it has to be done with a parent. And then there's things that are not for, not for children. And so, I'm just wondering, and I, I'm sure we do a good job of trying to curate that. I'm not trying to say that anybody doesn't do a good job of trying to curate that here. I'm just wondering if there's something that's in here, is there some kind of tagging or notation that these particular materials have content that, that a parent may want to approve first for a child?
So, we did have that discussion with all the library media specialists, and each school has a policy, a practice, a procedure. Again, we, we don't monitor and say, you can't get that book, but a lot of them will say, this is not your right reading level, or this is not your age level. They'll make that recommendation to the student and to the parents. But to say that for all 500, that is really, you know, choice at home. What do you want your children bringing home or not? So, that really where we work with the parents of what's appropriate, what's not. So, policy's never gonna say that, because that's how we have to work with that practice when we have, you know, 4,800 kids in our school system, how, how that, that conversation would happen at home when they come to check out books. But often not, the library media specialist's gonna have a conversation, is that appropriate at that level?
I mean, the books are due identified, like, this book is appropriate for ages eight to 12, or seven to 11, right, in the library. And those, the other thing, you have your, you have your library media specialist, in our case, we're collecting from ESPN, we have 16 kids. Like, those are conversations we have with kids all the time. You know, what are the things that appear to you? What do you wanna be reading about? Oh, let's take you over to the fantasy section, and you go to the fantasy section. If a five-year-old's picking up a fantasy book that they're not gonna be able to read, we're just gonna be like, you know, you're not gonna be able to read this, but you can take it home and look and get excited, because we're not gonna stunt a child's want to read and to be excited by texting me around word. But we certainly have those conversations with kids. We can do that in our classroom libraries, with our kids in our classroom. But, you know, you're not gonna find a book here that's meant for 18-year-olds, because that's not our age group. But you're certainly gonna find a grade span of four to 12, right, or four to 14, like, in that group, because that's where our kids are, the age group.
Right. I know. And it's tricky. The whole thing is tricky. I think there are, I think there's themes around, there could be language, there could be language that parents aren't comfortable with. There could be concepts around sexuality that parents aren't comfortable with. So, it, it just sounds like it's, a lot of it's up to the judgment of, of, I don't know. It doesn't seem like it's, the parents could become involved if they're interested, and if they're, if the child brings it home, and if they know it's in.
Right, so if there's a family that, or a set of families that are concerned, or, or had things that they would prefer, have those conversations with their children before they're reading about it.
Yes.
Parents, you know, families do know when their child is in the library, and they could certainly say, like, I'd love to see the books you checked out today. Let's talk about that. You know, that's certainly the avenue to do that, because it, like you said, it's an individual family versus a collective, right? So, that's that awesome opportunity for those families to have those conversations around language or something like that. But I mean, some of the most, you know, renowned authors of eight-year-old books have language that some families may be, you know, uncomfortable with, but again, they're going through a vetted process through the Association of Library Media Specialists. So, there is worth of significant research that's not about that. It is the experts that are making their determination if the book is appropriate for a grade school in our case.
Right. I, I understand. I think parents are the experts. I mean, that's just a philosophical, maybe, difference in, in those kinda things. But, yeah, I don't know, I don't know if there's anything objectionable based on what I described here in this particular policy. I just don't feel like I really understood some of those nuances well enough.
Do we wanna, we had a second motion on that, so I guess we're gonna vote on it? So, all in favor of passing the five policies together?
Aye. Oh, well, are we gonna pull that one out?
Well, no, well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting another motion. I, I may abstain. I mean, unless anybody else feels that it's worth looking at any of these specifically on their own.
Yeah. I mean, I've always felt personally very comfortable having my kid pick whatever book they wanna read, and then I think it's a good conversation, but I, I totally respect the fact you wanna pull it out for a second reading. That's absolutely fine with me.
So, so we have to vote on this, though?
Yeah.
You have to vote on the motion that was taken.
So, all in favor of passing them, the five together?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. We'll move on to the Superintendent Evaluation Committee.
So, we're meeting, we, we're not gonna meet next week, obviously, because people are hopefully going places and enjoying some time away. But we're gonna meet the week following, so I, I think we heard that at the joint board, right? So, there's a poll was sent out, like, a survey for what, the best time, so we're just working through what the exact time is. And then, we're gonna meet together, and that'll be the first opportunity for us to meet as potentially new members of that committee. So, we'll have a, I'll have a better update for everybody.
Great.
Next time.
Okay. Communications Committee, I know we heard a little bit about that at the joint board, but you just kinda wanna give a brief update.
Yeah, right. I know everybody here, board members here heard, but I guess just for you guys, we met with Esther, I think, last month. There's one rep from each town, and we were just talking about sort of communications as a whole within the SAU. And one of the things we had thought about doing was an audit of overall how communication is in each district. But what we found with those audits is they were very generic, like, they were like, do a newsletter every week or something, just not, not really worth the 20 grand that they cost. And then, Esther also brought up that she's gonna do a lot of strategic planning with the senior leadership team over the summer and fall. And she's like, everything you guys are talking about is also things that we're gonna be discussing. And so, we liked that a lot, that we would sort of support that. And I think the most valuable thing sort of I got out of the conversation was, I guess, twofold. One of the things I always feel like I'm missing is, what are other boards doing in other districts? And what are they doing well, and what could we learn from them? I, I don't feel like there's really kind of sharing between boards, and I would love for, to have that opportunity. Because I think here, at Stratum, we do a lot of things well, and we could share. And then, the second thing was, you know, communication out, I think it's sort of talked a lot, but what about communication back in? You know, I think all of us here are these, you know, I could've been at that barbecue with the Stratum moms. And, you know, you hear people talking to you, and how does that communication get to the right people? And so, communication out and communication in, I think will be a focus of the committee. So, we're gonna meet in September and, and really kind of hear what Esther, and Chris, and all of them come up with, and, and really work to support their communication plan.
Great, thank you. Okay. Ken, do you have anything? I know that meeting's coming up, but anything else come across now? No? Okay. Great, thank you. So, we'll move on to the administration mid-year data presentation.
So, about this stuff not with my emails, you don't see the hot mess that is in my email?
Inbox zero?
Thousands, thousands. Love them. You know, when you, like, walk away for a half hour, you put back, it's 140. You're like, it isn't that. So, just to sort of, hopefully this works for all of you. We did, at the meeting, we talked about being able to do the fall, we talked about fall data, we talked about winter data.
We talked about winter data. And then we talked about spring data. Or, you know, in the fall, we actually talked about after, spring and then in the fall. So the interesting, just so we're clear, this is data that was collected in January and February. But if you remember, we had new members in March and in February was such a budget time. So this is just why we're doing it now. And it's actually nice because then we have, so we get to see it for the first time. So the first few slides are about kindergarten. And we didn't have a lot of this data in the fall because we don't typically assess our kindergarten students in the same way that we would because they often had explicit instruction in a formal kindergarten. So this is one of the measures that we did do. So 79% of our students, 79 students were about 75% proficient in January '99. So you can see significant growth when they're given explicit instructions. This is in the area of rhyming recognition, which this is one of the really important indicators for our younger kids. Rhyme often plays into whether a student might represent as having dyslexic brain or other specific disabilities in the area of reading. And so this is really good data for us to have. And then allows us to really teach in specific online instruction. So uppercase letters, students who meet these expectations, September, 90%. End of the year, we had, I mean, sorry, in January, we had 100%. And it seems like these are finite skills. But when you are talking about the foundations of literacy, this is what it includes on. So it's super, super important. But to go back to a little bit of like how we're using our data to inform our instruction. If you remember, when we built our budget, we built in money to adopt learning without tiers, which is in writing curriculum. And so while we've obviously been doing that for years, teaching instruction, this is a systematic way that talks about motor planning in our brains. So that when kids begin to do longer pieces of writing that require a lot more cognitive demand because of the content and process, having letter formation that is accurate and legible really alleviates that component. Because one of the things that people do, especially of all ages, writing is one of the most complex and cognitively important and rigorous tasks that we need because of all the different skills that are involved. So again, lowercase. Many of you have had students that are kindergarten for a second. And there's lots of like lowercase, then uppercase, then lowercase. And it's really right. And that's not what we're assessing. It's just the formation of the letters and consistently doing, be able to do that. Letter sounds, it's just really exciting to see, to see the growth in such a short amount of time. We're going to get into, we actually have two of our kindergarten teachers.
I'm just noticing that.
We had also mentioned, based on our data from the previous couple of years, the need for more phonemic awareness instruction. So again, we have been doing that. But one of the things that really came out of COVID was the lack of those experiences before elementary school. And so this year, we've been using Higley and kindergarten in some first grade. And we actually just had kindergarten PLC this morning. And we were talking about just the impact of that alone has been so substantial. And then once those students have those skills, their phonics just kind of skyrocket. It's like that foundation pieces that we were talking about. So segmenting words is not even required in September. And then if you look at our January data, right? And we're again measuring against end of the year goals. So these are, we have 76% of the students already there. And we still had four months of school left, which is really what we were talking about at the beginning, early years growth. Wherever they started, you want to make a years growth. I'm going to talk to all of these.
Yeah. Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. So this is the reading benchmark that we talk about. We talk about want to send out that we do with our students. So first grade, it's those that have made a half a year's growth or more from September to January is a little bit over 75%, about 77% of our kids, which is actually not uncommon. And I'm sure Chris and Amy could speak to this. But when we're thinking about where our kids come in at the beginning of the year and what they had the year before, and you know, a percentage of our students notice they'll even go to kindergarten or, you know, breaking out of the pandemic. This for us was like really exciting data to see this grow, especially after the last few years that we've been watching. So 60% of first graders met grade level expectations in September. And by January, it's 70%. And then you look at that, that 30% is still approaching, which gives us really good information when we think about both tier two and tier three interventions that we support. So when this data comes up, it gives us an idea of what students we need to be giving, you know, three times 30. So they might be getting additional specialized instruction in some small groups for three times a week for 30 minutes to really fine tune some of those skills that they might need additional practice and instruction in the area. So something that you know is that in September, the benchmark is something like a D. That benchmark changes in January to something like an H. So that 70% continues, 60% in December. So that means, that speaks to kids who are continuing to grow. It's not, it's not like you said more, right? That means that you're keeping that those gains from September and continuing to meet the end of your benchmark, because that's the moving target.
Thanks for clarifying that.
That's awesome. I mean, it's a great way to think about every student being growth. So you'll see, right, as you think about your younger students is where we see the largest scale of skills and development of skills because of all of the experiences they had prior to coming to school. And so our goal, and we often talk about it, if any, whatever literacy specialist was here last year when we sent our students, our fifth grade students on to sixth grade, whom we've had them for six years, 100% of our students were on grade level by benchmarking system, which is like an enormous accomplishment. But part of the reason that that's possible is because we have, obviously, this incredibly universal instruction. But then we also have this ability with our staff, even with the support of the board and community around budget. We have literacy tutors, we have literacy specialists, and we have the resources in order to really, you know, offer those opportunities for growth. I mean, it's so exciting. It feels so good. There's a lot to celebrate. I will, I'm sorry. These will obviously all begin to.
Yeah, that'd be great. So that one actually went down, which is interesting.
So we were able to, so we've been able to analyze a lot of this data.
Barely.
Going back to what I was saying before, we had, we saw with the pandemic, there was, you know, significant issues with consistency around instruction. We also found that we had to, we adopted an phonics program, which is word study. And as the kids get older, that's a huge implication for the writing and the reading and the ability to copy more complex tasks. And so this is actually much better than last year, but we've also adopted a lot of things this year, but it doesn't resolve itself in eight months, right? You're going to look at over years and see the improvement of that. So this is probably, and this is going to require the most explanation. We spent a lot of time on this in the fall as well. So when the students are taking the I-Ready, which is the math assessment that we use three times a year, beginning in September, they are measured against end of year expectations. So the same thing happens in January. So when we're thinking about, for example, the 23% in January, they're already meeting end of year expectations or exceeding that. So when you look at that yellow percentage of 62%, right? You're talking about kids who still have six months to get to the end of the year expectation. So at the beginning of the year, you'll see a ton of yellow and a ton of red because they're being measured at the end of fifth grade and haven't exposed any fifth grade curriculum yet. And so you'll be able to see in June, I mean, excuse me, in June, significantly some bounds, right? So that would be what you would be wanting to look at. So there's your fall, and there's your winter. And that's whole school. So that's everybody. That's 540 students, or actually 512 because we don't teach your school. So here's kindergarten, beginning of the year, right? 81% are, have not met end of kindergarten expectations. While we wouldn't expect them to, they haven't exposed to that. We're halfway through the year and 46 are already at the end of the year.
Kate, what was the last slide? What grade level was that? I'm sorry.
That's whole school.
Oh, whole school. Okay.
So there's the example kindergarten. There's the data from kindergarten. Here's our data from first grade. So we're halfway through the year. We have 45% that are at the end of the grade level or beyond. And then we have 51% that are still either beginning of first grade, somewhere in between. And we won't really know until the end of the year when we assess again in June. And we still have 4% that are beyond that level of that.
So for the students that are at or above grade level by half year, how does the curriculum shift to accommodate them? Are they going to start, so first grade, is there, do we start pulling in some second grade curriculum? Is there?
So typically what happens is we're rather than think about different, it's a different set of expectations and standards or strands potentially. But it might be that, for example, in first grade, right, you want fluency through 20, addition and subtraction through 20. Like that's the most important first grade expectation. I'm sorry? Oh, you're right. First grade is 10, sorry. I figured it was 20. So then it's about using.
They can tell you these tests afterwards.
Well, good thing I don't. Actually, I knew that when I had one of those people, I was really worked on it until I got to calculus and cried every day. But they would then say like, what are the different ways that you can do that? What are the strategies you can do that? So it might be that they can do that, but they're not super efficient yet because they're still thinking about counting on their fingers or their toes and they need to stupidize and look at objects. Or they're saying, you're really comfortable with double-digit addition. Now we're going to be thinking about triple digits. So they're already thinking about face value in a different way. But it really would depend on what that student's ready for. What we find is you can, on one assessment, click and show. But then if I say, explain to me how you did that? They're like, I actually don't know how I did that. I just did it. Right? Which is what leads to crying in calculus because you're like, I just memorized the formula of the algorithm, but I don't actually understand it. So there's a lot more like in-depth. But we call that now sort of a low floor, high ceiling opportunity where there's access for everybody. But where kids can go begins to say like, ooh, I'm actually now going to be thinking about subtraction while I'm thinking about addition. What is that relationship between those two operations?
So is this diagnostic, it's labeled I-Ready. So is this just on I-Ready or just include? I remember in the past, you talked about how it almost sounds like a three-pronged evaluation.
Yes.
Does this include all three of those?
No, this is just one.
Sorry. Actually, can you explain that for?
So when we correlate data on students, we look at at least three points of data. So this is one point of data. We also, in math in particular, we do math reviews, which is where we sit with the student and ask them questions and they solve it in front of us. Because what this doesn't do is tell us their thinking. It just tells us if they have some accuracy around certain operation. So when we sit down with a student, I can be like, oh. And then I give that answer, like where it fell apart or where they really understood. But it also then says to me like, now I know where I need to go on your instruction because I can see where your thinking is currently at and where your understanding is at. And then the third piece would be what they do in the classroom, work samples all the time, or an end of year assessment as they might get older. So we always correlate multiple points of data to determine, you know, students' understandings in any one of our disciplines.
And for the students that are in the red, is that correlated to special education? Or like, is that?
It's a great question. Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not. Sometimes it might be that a student has something going on right now that's pretty significant and learning right now is really hard to access. In some cases, it might be that they're brand new to our school and what they've experienced at other schools is very different. Sometimes it might be that they have an IEP. And for others, it might be that they just need more time and more explicit instruction. So we would provide that through our H-vention model. Like I said, maybe they get three times, you know, three times 30 where they get specific small group instruction. So there's second grade. Third grade, which is like a lot to celebrate.
Yeah.
Our end of the year grade. Fourth grade. I did want to circle back to this because I think it was really important. We talked about the beginning of the year. So the national trends of the research that came out after the pandemic were for our primary grades. So K through two, literacy instruction was hit the hardest because that's the foundation of building literacy is kind of what we talked about. And so they, those students that didn't have access to explicit high-quality instruction every day, or they only received it via a remote, it was most impactful on our K through two population. That's a national trend. Whereas most students in third grade are pretty solid in their reading and they can improve their reading just by reading more, right? And they don't necessarily need as much explicit instruction. That's not the case for all students, but that was the national trending data. It was the opposite for math. So in K through two, it's a lot of exploratory, like I just talked about. In first grade, it's who would load the, through 10. Kids could typically access that. However, in third through fifth, we saw the, that was much harder because the strands in math change and it becomes more abstract. And so without that explicit instruction, their math was really hard to continue to do on their own without those sort of, you know, expertly tailored learning tasks done by educators in the classroom where math is such a social activity anyway and problem solving together. So you would see, you'll see a higher percentages for us here of students that needed additional intervention and support.
Is it fourth and fifth? That's where we're aging out of pandemic on that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's not bad, though. I mean.
No, this, I agree, but we, I think what was, I think, no one wants to say this, but at least was like, okay, this is what's trending nationally. This is not novellated SMS. It wasn't something we did. It was more about what we know about developmental, where children are at, particularly in different areas of understanding.
Can I ask another question on that, Kate? Well, do you, do you have fifth grade after? All right. I can wait. What I was going to ask is, so I think we're seeing, and it's, it's tracking fairly close. It's like 20 points on, from fall to winter. Do you anticipate that, a continuation of that? Do we anticipate another 20 points or so?
Or so.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, that's pretty good. I mean, we're getting there.
Yeah, it feels really good. And I think going back to, yes, we feel really good about it. So as you know, the board supported a math specialist last year. And so we've had a math specialist this year who's done tremendous work with the staff around sort of like best practices, like high-leverage math tasks. And in addition, really sort of looking at both our horizontal and our vertical alignment, which is something we hadn't done in a really long time. And so we were thinking about, you know, a third grade student may have had different experiences depending on what room they were in, enough to say they were wildly different. That's not what I'm suggesting. But maybe in this second grade classroom, they did this for four weeks and another one they did it for two. And so then you get, you end up with like the areas of focus might have been different. And now we have vertical and horizontal alignment. That's been the work this year. And then we're already seeing it pay off substantially because it's ensuring that continuity cohesion of instruction and student outcomes, which feels really, really good.
What's a high, what's a high-levered test?
Yeah. So one of the things that has come out in research is that math discourse is really pivotal for deep understanding. So if you remember, we were there with a worksheet and we sat down and you like literally for 20 minutes or 30 minutes did a worksheet. And the research is really clear that that actually decreases math understanding and it creates lots of inaccuracies because kids get, I want to just finish. And so they aren't thoughtful and thinking about reasoning. Whereas math discourse, so if I'm socially talking with a group of kids and we're all around the same problem and we're having to provide rationale, we're having to say, well, this is the strategy I use or this is my reasoning. The deeper understanding is feeding. So there's like high-leverage tasks or opportunities are creating much, students that are more flexible in their thinking, more accurate with their thinking and have deeper understanding.
Can I ask like a much broader question about all this stuff? So when we think about like competency-based, and I remember when we met, after I came on, it was, we were talking about like being able to do novel concepts. And so you have to look at a particular, like some quantitative problem and you look at it from a lot of different viewpoints, angles. Has that fundamentally, and I understand why we do it and I understand the trends over time and just national competitiveness and all these sorts of things about why we did it. But does that, has that necessarily impacted the amount of things that we can teach a kid? Because we have to teach one thing and we have to teach it so many, we're teaching so many viewpoints to a particular concept. Or does that, or has that methodology actually improved the amount of things?[1694.01] You know what I'm saying? Like, right, like.
So there's two things. So before it was coverage of content, which is not learning, right? And so now the focus is, I'm not just covering it second, because I, we could do that with kids. Like, we could continue to drill on skill, but two months later, if you ask them, they're like, I have no idea. Like, that's a problem, right? Because then you're, that's actually lost two months of learning. Where, so you may not have the same coverage content, but you will have deeper learning that could be applied later that I'm not going to forget. That, so if I learn, say, for example, this isn't treating the math, but if I learn the life cycle really deeply, then I can think about the life cycle across all different species. I don't just think about the plant cycle, right, or the bear. So I think that that's the important part, right? They become enduring over time, right? And I think that that's the hope bit, or that is the goal. And so what we were experiencing is like we had masters of trivia, but I don't understand what it actually means. Like, I used to say what time comes on, I could say 81, but because of what does that mean, I was like, I have no idea. Right, so the idea is like, I actually know what I mean. I understand how I got there. So what I think the other piece about that is that when you teach kids to think deeply, there's also that metacognition that you're working with kids about like, what are you actually doing in your brain right now? So that at any point in their life, whether it's two months from now or two years from now, they're like, I know how to think about something that I know nothing about. I know how to use what I already know to answer what I don't know. I know how to be, you know, a critical consumer, what's reliable and what's valid if I'm trying to sway someone's opinion or sway my own opinion. I know how to access information because it's readily available to me. But that doesn't mean it's good information, so how do I know if that's good information? So it's taking the opportunity to become critical consumers versus like, I'm going to regurgitate what you told me and forget 20 minutes later. You know, the same is true about like the research behind timed assessments for students, particularly in the area of mathematics. The research is really clear that there's more inaccuracies, there's less understanding, and the anxiety of it produces less accurate results. So by giving them, saying, there's no time, take your time, if you want to build it, build it. As long as you can show me your understanding, that carries on to future learning. So there's a lot of research that supports that this is super important for developing learners for the future.
Help, one more quick one, unless anybody else has something on that. Durability, are we testing durability of that exact thing that you're describing?
Great question. So you mean in terms of like, what's the payoff in the future?
Right, if we're starting with the end in mind, the end in mind is that people are able to take the cognition and be able to apply it differently instead of just memorizing things. Like, are we testing for those functions later?
So what you're asking then, so that's a question that the SAU has been grappling with and talking about. And because what we currently have, and we're actually going through this for our framework for teaching NGSS stuff right now, the testing cycle, or what tools we have, have not evolved in 20 years because they align with no child left behind, and they have to evolve. But what we are finally hearing is feedback from employers, colleges, the military, that we're finally getting students that are actually able to be out-of-the-box thinkers and be able to be successful in environments where they may not know information. So there's, we're getting that data.
Anecdotal.
Anecdotal, correct. Because it hasn't been long enough, right? Because you're talking about a full generation of kids that start in kindergarten and go through 12. That's 13 years of school, we're just not there yet. But we're also hearing, you know, from high schools across the country that like, we're finally able to say like, it doesn't matter if you had the plant or the, you know, the rock cycle. We're actually saying, it doesn't matter if you understand cycles, so now we can dive in more deeply. And that's information from like NGSS is collecting that data across the country. So there is enough starting to pour in, but I don't know if streamlined the way it used to be where we could, you know.
What does, what does NGSS stand for?
So that's the Next Generation Science Standards, which is another huge part of the drive that's been happening for about 12, maybe 12 years or so, to evolve our public school system.
Eric, I love, the piece that I've had there is to be happy that having this multiple opportunities to like demonstrate that child. That's what profession is, is when I show it to you multiple times. I see a big change there right away in how teachers are collecting data on their students. So I'm, you know, walking around, like, have a checklist done, noting like, did I show you this today? If I saw, I'm doing, so I'm doing it again. He showed me four different times, you'll be able to execute this, he's a profession. I'm watching that happen more than before when we were, you know, testing, you know, either the unit or something and saying, this was your one time to shine, this was your one time to show me, maybe you got a lucky guess and I think you're a profession, but you won't. So I see that shifting practices in a really data-driven way that will have a task for tomorrow's instruction based on what I saw today. So even like a small shift like that has huge outcomes in the classroom, I think is really important. And I would just add with all this data, like this is your zoomed-out big picture of you, but there's a ton of screening work done, if you think at like the intervention level where we're screening for a specific skill, it sums to 10. Intervening for five weeks, giving it again and saying, did they respond? And the outcomes of that are about to come forward here to see like smaller picture. This is, in my opinion, this is the good work because this is the six weeks, four weeks of specific instruction where you can literally see kids responding to release from intervention that worked, right? So that leads to this more narrow work as well. That's a really cool data sheet there.
Yes, so this is a benchmark for the first grade. This is done through the interview process that we were talking about. So it's more targeted than something like I-ready, it's done far more frequently. And this is over three weeks. So these students received a total of nine sessions for intervention. And if you look at that, you know, of the 10 or 12 that are up there, except for two, they were released from intervention. They met the expectation. So that's a pretty amazing thing when you think about targeted intervention. You're not spending your whole year there, you're literally like, where is the fall down for me? Give me this explosive instruction or practice and I'm being released back and I'm in the general curriculum now receiving that universal core instruction.
This is the first year we've had something like this. Addition of the math specialist, you're able to access this kind of system. Turn around, it's fascinating.
Is this math and literacy?
This is.
Just math, okay.
That's one.
Okay.
This is, so we, literacy has been in place at SMS for a number of years. And math, we've had math tutors and math intervention, but with a math specialist, it has evolved that factor significantly because you have an expert in it.
Excellent.
So that's the last slide. I just want to show you what math shows.
Great, thank you. I'm just wondering if there's any areas of concern, anything you're worried about or focused on for the second half.
So writing is a piece that we feel like, so we had to really make some decisions about what you're going to focus on. You can't focus on everything all the time. And I think universally, that's a piece that we're talking about at all grade levels is sort of helping our students identify their author identities and then really expanding. Because kids fall into like, I love to write work this way, or I love to do a fiction. And that, and you're like, that's wonderful, I don't want to stop you from writing. But to expand your identity as an author and to think of yourself as an author of a variety of texts is really important. And so I think that that's a piece we just want to be as thoughtful about in the future so that we have the same level of attention that we have in reading. Likewise, as you know, we have a teacher that will be in sabbatical for the spring of next year who really will be working through the NGSS that we were talking about. He should be sort of standing upon the signs all grade levels in a really inquiry-based way to sort of deepen our student science experience.
Got one more, sorry. Do we ever recommend that somebody repeat a grade? Okay.
Rare.
I figured it was rare.
Really clear that you, it's, the research says don't. I think we recognize that we're working with human beings and sometimes there are areas of factors that would suggest that maybe that's the right thing for kids. I would, I think here we'd probably do it four times in my five years here. And I think it's most often done in kindergarten, the earlier you, if you're going to do it, the earlier the better for a lot of reasons. But if there have been students that we think are just really would benefit from another year developmentally, that's just where they belong. And it's not necessarily that we think they're even up in potential for learning struggles. It's more about developmentally, they just need another year of play, really, or to get more instruction on those foundations.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The, if the research, what's the alternative? The research says don't do it, what's the alternative?
So I, so there's a couple of things to speak to that. So the, the federal laws around special education, so that often plays into this conversation all the way, suggest that a student should move along where they're supposed to with the right supports in place. So what often happens is like, well, there, if there's special, let's just keep them given the year. Nope, special education law, it's clear that we should, unless it's a rare circumstance, just provide a scaffolding and support to make them go along with their C and H peers. And then the flip side of that is sometimes a family's like, they were just really young, but we thought they might be ready, and they're just not. And that's okay too, I mean, we're talking about four and five and six-year-olds. And the reality is like, if they're not ready, school becomes harder and harder as they go. And if we can provide them an extra year in kindergarten where they then become confident and solid, you're then sort of paving a way for them to continue to be successful. But if you push a student forward in kindergarten who truly is developmentally just not quite there, school is hard the entire duration. And so those are sort of the reasons why we retain, retaining a student in kindergarten.
Anything else? I'm gonna actually have a swap new business and old business, so you're not off the hook yet, Kate, sorry.
I don't mind one bit.
Because I wanted you here for the conversation around the school calendar and the use of the school for elections.
Yeah.
So yeah, we can move on to school calendar.
So I'm handing out this proposed school calendar for the 23, 24 school year. How that's wild to say.
I know.
And as, so, so you would have seen the survey that we sent out to our families asking students about early release days, how it all works over these days. That conversation has actually been a part of the principals and senior leadership for a couple of years now for a variety of reasons. The, I think the number one reason that we've been talking about that is particularly about early release days are really not maximum, maximum learning days for students, right? Students are excited because they know they're going home, related art schedules switch all over the place. Lunch is really like complicated because you're in school for a short period of time. So that's part of it. Another part of that is that it's really difficult for families, often with early release days. Whereas like, if I can plan for a full day, it's so much easier than to think about trying to leave halfway through the day or what, you know, that, and that kind of stuff can be challenging. And then the third piece is that the other half of an early release day is intended for teacher learning, right? Educator learning. And it is really hard by the time the kids leave and we're kind of like, we're getting like two hours of what we would hope would be a three or three and a half hour to really learn. And as we just talked about tonight, there's so much that's changing in education. And to keep up with that, we need collaborative learning time ourselves in order to provide the best learning experience for kids. So for a couple of years, we've been talking about that at the principals' meetings and the senior leadership. And then a couple of the elementary schools actually started having this conversation, like building-wide and community-wide. And so we were able to sit down and talk about like, how do we then build schedules that allow for collaboration across SAU 16? Because one of the things that was happening with early release schedules is they weren't on the same days. And so it became really, because of busing and a whole lot of other reasons. So like, for example, if we were doing something in the area of fineness awareness and it's really only being used by, in kindergarten and first grade, wouldn't it be great if they could be conforming with the kindergarten and first grade teachers at Newfield or the kindergarten and first grade teachers in Exeter, especially when you're trying to share resources? Like, if we get grant funding and we're bringing someone in, why would we not want to spread the work across SAU 16 and maximize those opportunities? So there were a lot of driving factors of trying to move to a schedule that was consistent across the SAU at least for five of the days. And then provide for supporting our families and to provide a better learning opportunity for our kids. So the schedule is in front of you, no longer has early release days. And again, we surveyed families and we surveyed staff preference. And most of them are on Fridays, which was a preference as well for families. And then there are a couple that are on Tuesdays, and that's basically because of broken. So there'd be seven, rather, there's actually two before school starts, right? Which we always do, which brings us to seven, there are two on Tuesdays, and then there are five other ones. For the sake of, just to be putting this out there, two of ours will be when we do our student-led conferences because right now, you know, that's what four early release days are. So now that would just be two in service days.
That makes sense.
So that's what's in front of you.
Okay. There are still two early release days.
Oh, yeah, so I, I'm glad you mentioned that, Sophie. So the board actually voted on these. And so the last was the last day of school, and the board voted on that last, I guess, for September to make it the last day of school early release. It actually lines up with almost all of the other schools in the SAU, they mostly do that. And then the second one is.
December 22nd, yeah.
There's a reason for that, so the STA.
Yeah.
Well, and the Strategy Teachers Association proposed to, as we brought it to you guys because you guys made the decision in conjunction with them. We trade that afternoon for two evening events, which is when we do our student exhibitions. So the, everybody leaves on the 22nd at half-day. Teachers will work for a full day on this day, well, end of the, end of the year. Students will leave, but teachers will work. But the 22nd, actually, teachers are done halfway through, everybody's done. And they do two night events that are about an hour and a half each to make up those three hours. So that's a practical piece that has to be met. So those are on here. And when we met with the executive board, they wanted to propose that we do that again next year. That's why it's represented on the calendar and we would talk about tonight.
So was it overwhelmingly that people wanted to do this, get rid of early, was, or like the result?
Families were.
I'm assuming it was, but, yeah.
Families were overwhelmingly, the staff, we said, would like it, indifferent, or dumb. It was overwhelmingly like it or indifferent. I think 6% that were prepared to go to early releases. And I think for the, the indifferent, really, it doesn't.
Yeah, right, okay.
But it was still, I think, 72% that said, yes, we want to go to full days.
Okay.
And the other piece I should have mentioned, I'm sorry I didn't. The early release days, when you have a student receive services.
Oh, yeah.
It's impossible to manage. It is so hard. And like, so then you have your specialty teachers or your OT or your speech trying to make up the services for you this lofty afternoon. It's really, really challenging because you know the domino effect of like, oh, I'll just put you in a table, I love this kid, and it's really difficult. With full days, you can avoid that altogether, which is really nice for continuity for kids.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on the calendar? So we're not, are we voting on this?
You do.
Oh, we do. This is the, okay, got it. I mean, I think it's a good move to move this direction. I mean, I know my kid's a half-day of school is like. So. All right, do we have a motion to vote on the proposed 2023, 2024 academic calendar?
Yep, so moved.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That leads us into the discussion of the elections. So we received, I received a letter from the town asking about that. So as far as that goes, that means that students wouldn't be in the building. And I just wanted to confirm that, Chris, on every election on that sheet? I haven't done the matchup, yeah.
So this past year, there were primaries in September.
Yes, right.
That's not every year. So I had reached out to David when we were doing this to say, is there a primary or is there elections in September that we need to be aware of? So this year, we did not, we had kids in the building. It went fine, but there was some concern about just having that many people in and out of the building that we're not able to account for. I will say the town does a great job. These are amazing, like, everybody does a great job, there's a great collaboration. There's still some genuine concern, and I think, as we saw tonight, there's still continued criticism about adults being the voters we couldn't help for. So for next year, the voting days are obviously November. And then in March, and those were already days that we carve out because they're SAU-wide, so we didn't have to worry about that for next year. But the letter that David sent does talk about for the 24, 25, if we would put one of those in-service days on that day.
On that day, okay.
To ensure that, you know, we don't, we still need to get some of them, we'll just use whatever in-service days that day.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, that's great. Because I, I did hear from some parents about like, oh, I didn't send my kid to school that day. It just wasn't comfortable, yeah, so. I did notice it said prep the night before. What, what's it, how many hours is, does that cut into a school day as well?
I'm sorry.
Do they set up the night before an election?
No, they come after school.
Okay.
Yeah. They have had a conference, they've come in at 1:30. 1:30, they didn't come in, they came at 1:30, I thought.
No, they came, they kicked us out at noon, passed off the gym. Which is fine when it's the last.
Because I, I know they canceled rec that night.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So I guess we need to vote on that as well. I don't know that the time sensitivity on that is. I don't, he didn't give me like a, get back to him right, I'm assuming we can just vote tonight.
I think we did the very first time that he presented over a year ago.
Yeah.
Because they had come to us.
He came to that meeting.
Yeah, I think we, I think you guys did agree to how to have it here. I think the difference now is we will ensure that it's an in-service day versus a day in the building.
Okay, yeah. All right. So does anybody have any discussion, questions, comments on that? Do we want to, okay, I'll make a motion to, how should I word this? Accept the, the dates, what is it?
Or you can like grant the town use of the school.
Yeah, there we go, grant the town use of the school on the proposed election dates. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you, Jen. And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll just have to think about like, the next time we get this letter, hopefully we're doing a school rebuild or something.
Yeah, yeah.
The idea was that they have it in two different places, even though the time I just took it way up smaller. But now, I think that they're like, having it in two different places.
Yeah.
The residents of Strad, where is it?
Right.
We're speaking really wanting to ensure that as many people that want to vote.
Yep. No, that makes sense. Okay, great. So I guess we're going to move on to old business, which is board goals. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can take a quick break, does anybody want to?
Yeah.
Yes, do that.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so board goals. Chris, do you want to speak to this a little bit?
Sure.
To kind of give everybody, because this is the first time for some of board members for working on these.
So Kate, you know, talked to me about, you've been working on your board goals throughout the year. And kind of asked, what do I, who have you been doing with other boards? So I tried to provide you with some examples. On this first sheet that says example board goals. So the three boards that I worked with, I gave you the board goals that they adopted at the beginning of the year. And one of the big things that we looked at is how can, like a data presentation today, how can you get the data that you need in your role to do, to, to put together your budget and put together policies? What are all the things that go into what you see? And so we, we've created timelines in each of our schools with myself and with our administration of what, what's a good time and a topic to talk about. So you don't get a forty-five minute hour presentation, you're getting, you know, thirty minutes about something very specific. So again, today, you'd get that in other boards as well. But, you know, we talk about lunch, you know, so that's a great question because you have to support it. So we'd go into our lunch numbers because your lunch numbers affect your budget. We talk about staff growth. If you're putting a lot of money into new teachers, well, there's going to be classes or professional development. If we're seeing staff that are not growing, why are they not growing? Why are they not taking classes and engaged in professional development? We talk about the social emotional learning here. So if we ever, we saw behaviors or we had a need for a counselor, an extra counselor, whether it be a social worker or another guidance counselor, we'd be able to provide you data to say, here's what we're seeing with kids that are happening right now. So what we try to do is arm the board with as much data in these different areas that really affect what you do and your roles, so that you can ask the questions and understand what's going on in your school, kind of like you did today with the academic data. You know, and I think that was really highlighted that they were able to get the data to say, why did we need a math specialist? And then this time, you can see the work that the math specialist's doing. So again, that's kind of the rationale. So if this is the direction you want to go, I'd be glad to do that in preparation for next years. We'd, we'd take the calendar, I've worked with Kate and Kate and Selena to say, what are the topics? We bring it to you in the first meeting and say, does this look good? So you know each month, this is what the principal's report's going to be in some faction. They might bring other individuals to come in. So like during S E L, maybe your guidance counselors are talking about it. But again, getting more voices at the table for the work that's being done. So that's what I provided. And then the second part is just, we really tried to look at the board and their role when they wrote the goals for their board. And I love Jen's suggestion that I want to bring back to the joint board. Can we create like learning times with everybody to hear the good things that are happening? Because I don't think we do that enough. So I think that's a suggestion I would like to bring back. So thank you for that. But to look at the role and then building a goal around that. So each board's a little different, but you can see that they do have a educational goal that's required. But that educational goal is supported by getting data conversations, much like you did today throughout the year. So I just provided them as examples for you to maybe help the conversation. I know Jennifer, Eric, and Kate all had goals that they submitted, which is on that second sheet. So you can see some of the ideas that you have had and thoughts that you'd like to put into place. Because I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we're still working from the twenty-one, twenty-two school.
I had goals too, I just missed the boat. Sorry. I have two I'd like to propose.
Yeah, I was really excited about this, creating this plan. I think that that was something that we struggled with previous, previous years. So I think that this is really great. And how would you go about doing that? Like, you, you come up with the ideas, then you bring it to us? Or do we, are we allowed to throw ideas out that we want to hear about?
Sure.
Because that was kind of my thought, was if, if people have things that are on this list or something, we could let you know and then we could kind of figure out a timeline for that.
Yeah, and I would think that most of the ideas are going to fit in one of these categories. Because we looked at your overall, what's the function of the building? And then where do you, you know, have to put money or write a policy about it? So, but you definitely could. And then I would work with your, with, with Kate and Selena, what's a good time to do it?
Okay, yeah. Does everybody like, what do you guys think of this? So you had, it's like a schedule, so we know and what's coming up for the next month ahead.
I like it. I mean, I think it's kind of, I like having some structure to it. Just knowing what's on, and having the visibility of like what's going to be. Is there anything else? I mean, Chris, is this, is the timing of when you did that, was that, obviously, there's some things that you have to do, like the mid-year student assessments. And then do you fit everything else in? Or are there specific reasons why, like rationale?
It's pretty similar in all three buildings, but like, you would see maybe the lunch program got shifted to February, like for Brentwood, where there are town meetings so that they could have that, that discussion of what the budget went through. So depending if it was S B two or town budget, we might move something up, which was a hot topic. If you're doing a facilities project, right, you're going to want to have that data points more often or not. So, you know, you're going to want to know what's going on and through the, the report. But is there specifics that you want to hear early on in the year? So that's where we'd get feedback from you. If you're looking at your behavior or S E L, you're going to want to look at that towards the end of the year so that you can build out how many students that you're seeing. So there is some rationale of when's the best time to present it with the data we'd have. But it will also be board and, and school specific.
Is there a reason special ed is on here twice?
Yeah, in this, for this school, we were looking at a new staff member. Again, much like your math specialist, so they wanted to see the data at the beginning of the year regarding special education and how did those numbers either decrease or what was the, how was the growth of those students? So that was why they wanted to see it twice.
Interesting. Okay. Do we need to vote on this?
You don't, if you just give me the directive.
If everybody thinks this is a good idea and we can try to come up with something for next year.
Yeah.
I would probably try to refine some of these, but so, like, for example, when we look at state testing numbers, like, I would love to see, like, what were they last year or what are they this year? So there's continuity between the numbers. So that's what I was just thinking about. Inside some of these categories, there might be subtopics that we're particularly interested in for S M S.
Like, for me, under S E L, it would be behavior and discipline. Because that's probably one of the more things I hear from community members about, so.
And we've talked about that, like, what's in Alma?
Yeah.
Like, what are we tracking? And being able to, I think, contribute as a board to requests for information, obviously, generic information or non, non-public kind of information, but.
Yeah, I think in general, we want to be data driven.
Yes.
So in speaking for just me, I, part of my problem, though, is I'm not sure I always understand what the right denominators are to look at. So, you know, for me, and I, and I was the one who didn't do his homework and submit goals. But part of that was because I wasn't, you know, I don't have an education background. And that's, that's a skill and, you know, discipline all to its own. So I'm not comfortable saying, you know, it should be from X to Y. But I want to have that as our frameworks, you know, so like, and, and I'll give a very concrete example that we came up with tonight. So like, I know right now, we measure for students, six months worth of growth or years worth of growth. I'm not sure I know what that means. And so I struggle with that and struggle trying to put goals around that because I think about, you know, and again, acknowledging, I am of that generation where it was, you got an A, B, and a C. And if you don't know these things in this bucket, then, you know, you're, you're repeating the grade, right? So my, my favorite reference is not correct or way off, old school. But what are, again, what are my things? What are the right metrics? If we want to be data driven, if we want to be metric driven, how do we kind of normalize what those right metrics are to look at? Because I, I certainly, right, Eric has seen here, you've got efficiency scores. What are those proficiency scores? Because one of the things that we had heard this when, when three of us were running, well, this testing is right. Well, no, this testing is right. This testing doesn't count because, you know, parents can opt out. So therefore, there's a zero in there. And like, there was all this noise around what's right and what's wrong. And so I want to be data driven, but also I don't have the background to have a good reference for saying, this is the norm, the norm we're measuring against. I think that's where you could help me kind of help create all this stuff. Because I'm not sure I understand what twelve months worth of growth is. Because at some point, these kids are going to go into a learning institution, maybe it's high school, maybe it's college, where it's, it's not how much you grow, it's whether or not you know the topic. And that may not be relevant in, you know, kindergarten. May not be relevant in first grade. Is it relevant in fourth grade? Like, at what point do you have to start learning a set standard? And I just, I don't know how to think about that. And I know I'm kind of hearing some processing out loud, but this is, this is what, for me, creating goals, we have to do. We have to make sure that we understand what the right measurements and metrics are. Because I think so much has changed from when we all.
So maybe this will help because it's a great question, right? So I think Jennifer brought up, you know, having cohorts, so we're watching the same kids, how they grow over time. So if you use the state testing score, we're not comparing fifth graders now to fifth graders last year. Because you can't, they're different kids. Although that state test compares all fifth graders. So that's a nationally, or state norm test. What we want to see, I think, what the board would want to hear is, how are our kids growing? Because you're, one of the, the biggest board goals is academic excellence, right? So how do we measure that? We show you growth of students over time. So, and I ready, we could say, where was our school at the beginning of last year? Where are they at this year? What are grade levels? So first graders last year, second graders this year, and have they made that growth? And that's where as a board, you'd put it on me. Chris, why are we not growing? And then I say to Kate and Kate and Selena, why are we not growing? Right? And then you say to me, how do we support those kids? Do we need more money in our budget for our resources? Whether it's time or equipment or more people? Or is there certain things regarding our policies that we need to change? So that's how it feeds into it. So it's, I think it's our responsibility to do a better job of educating the metrics and showing it over time. So I think that's a great suggestion that Jennifer had, is that we show you the cohort learning. Because we can give that to you on longitudinal data. And then are we meeting the successes we need to? You know, and if not, then what are we going to do about it? Do we need to do more intervention time? Do we need more interventionist? Do we not? So anytime we come here, we should be able to say, no, what we have, our staffing, our equipment, our resources working, or it's not, we've got to look at something different and it's going to cost money. Do you give us the approval to do that? You know, and as a board, you're, you're evaluating, you know, me through Esther, you know, giving, you know, feedback to Esther and say, he's not moving that school. Or, my goodness, he's moving that school because, you know, he's working with the administration and they're, they're giving you the information to say, here's our academic success and growth.
So I'm going to, I'm going to ask this question just from our own education and then we'll double that because again, I don't fully understand. But if we are measuring against our own metrics, does, not that we're just began to advocate, doesn't that, are those the right metrics we're creating? So like, for example, right, if we're saying, here's this cohort of kids and, you know, they need to be, so like right now, I have my kids in the playground, so they need to learn multiplication on a certain number of digits, a certain number of places. And so we're saying, well, that's, that's important metrics, that's what we're, you know, using. But what if every other school in state has third graders doing that? And I'm, again, not, this is a poor example, because all I can think of. But like, I'm, I'm curious about, if we're setting our own internal metrics, is that the right? Or, yeah, at some point.
That's, that's what I do, right? So I take our whole, I ready for our whole district. And I list our schools out because they take the whole, they all take the same test. And I say, wait a minute, why are the fourth graders in Stratum at eighty percent right now? And Newfield's there at twenty percent? What the heck happened? And then I, that's when I have my conversation with my Newfields administration, say, what's going on? You know, what, what, you, last year, you were, you know, the same group of kids was there. So is it our instructional piece? Is it our interventions? So that's, that's what you pay us to do? And then make sure it would happen? Because that's a great question. We, we want to see that growth, but that's how we look at when we're driving the same way for all of our seven elementary schools, that our element, and then our K eight is all consistent. Are we meeting it and who's not and who is and who's why? So another district, they've been the lowest in reading scores for three years now. They hired a reading specialist and they made the most significant jumps in one year. Why? Because they had a specialist to work with the teachers, to train, to look at the reading, the right reading instruction. And when we provide that reading instruction for all kids at the level, that's when the biggest driver is going to go up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question.
Yeah, I said, I want to be very careful that I'm not porting over kind of like work-life expectations into school. But it's just how I think and I need to kind of like, I need to, I don't know what the right word to translate this. Because I think there's relevance there and then we have to have data metrics, right? I don't, having metrics where it's, we're going to talk to the administration and help, it doesn't help. Like, you don't have like set targets.
And I struggle with that same thing too. And it's not, nothing personally, it's, it's literally like, we're creating our own metrics. That does, it seems like there's got to be some sort of outside. I don't know, I'm, but I don't understand, I don't know what the alternative to that is.
I would just, I, I honestly think, though, to your point, it's not, I don't want to take like work-life corporate, but there are principles that still apply across the board. Can you measure it? Can you compare it? How do you know when you've been, how do you know when you've got it? How do you know when you've accomplished a goal? Right, I mean, those aren't, that's not like Jack Welch's school of K through twelve. I mean, it's, those are just principles.
Yeah.
And so I think, to me, I want to apply those principles to whatever we put down, you know, in my mind.
That'll help us support, right? If we have those, those principles, then it'll help us make sure that we're focusing the right things to support the school. I am personally uncomfortable saying that, well, these are the right things. Because, yeah, not in here. So like, we're talking about us setting goals. I think my role is to support the administration with whatever is right for them to do. But I also want to make sure that our targets, more and more, but like, our, our, our metrics are the right ones to further our kids.
Yeah, so like, if you look at Kensington, the first one, where they had board member role in educational program development. So they went back and forth, kind of similar today, like you are. And they just, they wrote the goal, engage in data discussions. And much like you did, you got that report today. Asking the questions that you asked, that's very appropriate to ask those questions. Because you're asking, are we meeting the success that we need to do? But they know that as their role as a board member, they can't set a metric that we have to be at ninety percent because that's not the board, the role of the board. The role of the board is saying, hey, if you're not meeting our expectation of growth through these data discussions, what's going on? You know?
What's the difference in that, though, Chris? What's the difference between those two things that you just said?
The, kind of the role of the board and the role of, of the administration. It's just how it's outlined. But you, so we developed these right out of the, our policy of, of a board member and the role of the board goals compared to the daily management or the supervision from my level to administration or Esther's roles in administration of the evaluation of the staff here.
I just mean, what's the difference in the two things that you said? You said that, you said one was like a, a met, like a number, numerical goal.
Yeah.
But then you're saying you, you would do the same thing. It's just not our role to suggest that.
Yeah, because you're setting the metric. The board wants to set the metric because the board role is, how do we support this through policy and money? I would set a metric, you know, a measurement piece.
Where? Can you, can, can you help me understand that?
Sure, I can send you the roles of a board member.
I got it. I mean, I can, I can pull it up. And I'm not trying to be funny or anything, but I mean, we, we walked through this like last time, very briefly. Feel free to carry on until I can find it. But I mean, we read through what like three oh three was and it said, it's pretty specific, I thought.
Well, so here, this, I struggled with this whole because it made the data special reports. You said, like, so does that mean they.
Was the goal met, like, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to be precise and trying to understand how it was whole.
So if you saw that data tonight, right, and we were at the twentieth percentile halfway through the year?
Yeah.
That's when you'd be like, Chris, can you, can you give us rationale to why that's happening? Right, are we supporting, are we putting our money in the right spot? Because the superintendent designee is the one that, that's your employee. So I'd be like, yeah, I've got to work with this board. And so either I'm going to do that work and work with the board, to, to the administration to get where we need to, or not, and I'm not going to be employed here, you know? So that's really the function, is that it's the job of the superintendent or designee to work with your administration, which oversees your school, to meet that goal. And it's the board to say, go do it. So I'm the one that you have to give the directive to, and then I carry that through. Where, because the role and relationship can't directly have the principals do that, that work.
No, I agree. I, I mean, here's, here's what I read last time for three oh three, oh one, right? And it's got all the different things that the board shall do. This is G. I know you, you know this, I'm sure, Chris, and you're probably going to be able to help me with this. It says, in consultation with the superintendent and in accordance with statutes and rules of the State Board of Education, determine the educational goals of the district, S M S. Develop long-range plans and identify measurable and attainable short-term objectives. And then it says that the board shall require the implementation of those to reflect, you know, the program's been designed to do that. So to me, it's like, where does, I don't, I don't understand how that's not within our purview to say, this is a short-term objective that we as a board want the district to perform to.
So and I, so I think you're on the same page, you're having the same trouble. So, and, you know, last year, we didn't have updated goals, there was no reference in COVID, right? But so, let's, if we rewind a year, right? We know we have, and I'll use I rate as an example, because I, I love the data output for those reports. I think that's fantastic. Why would it not have been appropriate at the beginning of this year to say, you know, by the end of the school year, you know, the expectation is that, you know, all kids in their respective classes are at, you know,[1686.34] all kids in their respective classes are at, you know, ninety percent of the, the targeted learning for fourth grade and I ready, right? And some of them are making up what they go. Knowing that they're not going to be there in September and December and, and right? But all along the way, with that goal as our North Star, that's still driving conversations that we haven't had it anyway, right? Because Kate did say last year, hey, I really need a math specialist because of COVID. And we, and we were all totally on board. We didn't necessarily have the data, right? But we all, you know, we knew it was the right thing to do, so we did it. So but why would it not have been correct for us at the beginning of that year to say, you know, okay, our target goal is recover from COVID, ninety percent of students at whatever the right metric is, right? You obviously need yourself and Kate to tell us, but that is board, board goal number one, right? So what do we all have to do to get all of our kids at ninety percent of, you know, I know you used to have proficiency in your goals, but I'll reference, you know, the I ready diagnostic. Ninety percent of the I ready diagnostic, diagnostic for their appropriate grade rate, grade level. And then that's our goal for the end of the year. And then kind of as we're going, you know, Katie, Kate is saying, I really need a math specialist. Okay, great, let's get our math specialist. So I am questioning why we wouldn't have those hard numbers in the goals when we have the data to reference? As opposed to, you know, so like, looking at these, at these reference goals, you know, keep students at the center of the decision-making process. To me, that's not really a goal, that's a.
It's aspirational, it's aspirational.
Yeah, you're talking about SMART goals. It's smart, measurable, achievable, time-bound.
Yes, right, exactly.
And my, yeah, there's an, it's an acronym.
I can't figure it out.
It's a SMART, SMART goal.
Yes, exactly. And again, I'm, I'm saying, you know, we did it anyway last week, we trust Kate and Kate, right? So, but I, for me, right, we're different. I necessarily like those, because they seem, they seem too squishy.
So I just, I ask you this question.
Yeah.
If you, as a board, set the goal that ninety percent of our kids are going to meet their math proficiency, how are you a board going to ensure that? How are you going to implement that on a daily basis?
We, I don't think we want to implement it on a daily basis. Like, we won't say Funtis and Penellas, like, what you have to do.
That's your board goal though, so you're going to have to measure yourself that you got your kids at ninety percent math.
Oh, I understand.
So it's the internal, I guess, yeah, we're talking about different goals.
That might be your overall aspiration that we want our administration to do? And that's what you can say to me, Chris, we want higher math scores. Great. The, the internal part, because what can you control of a board? You can't control that ninety percent. You can control hiring someone when our numbers don't meet that through your, through your policy or through your budget. But you don't implement that every day, so that's why we don't do hard numbers from a board. You can do hard numbers when you're doing negotiations, like, we're going to pass a contract. You're, you just committed right there. So I would go back to like, we keep kids at the center of discussion, so you do. Like, when you're talking about your budget and we have twenty-two kids in a classroom, are we going to split that? You just said, is it in the best interest for our kids to be in a class of twenty-two or two classes of eleven? And what's the rationale behind that? So you would measure that through how you're committing money or resources. I know it's very vague, but that's the two avenues to really drive through.
So there's, so I think you just, you clear, that was the only way, there was a perspective shift. So the, I was looking at the board goals as, as goals that the five of us and the administration collaboratively worked to as a result of the school. You're saying the board goals are specifically for the five of us.
Correct.
Not representative of the school.
That's totally incorrect on that reading.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Totally disagree.
So I, I have read it the same way you did. That's what I'm trying to figure out, that's, that's this next week. So, because I interpreted it the same way you did, that the goals are.
We don't, we don't need to have control in my mind. And we don't want to have control. And we don't want to, we don't want to do the tinkering of use this curriculum and use that and, and put this person over here for, none of that. I think my rationale for the, way I wrote that, or in my interpretation of three oh three was, we have to have like a, a North Star. And there's like a few things that we might want to include in those goals. Academics is just one of them. But at least, once we all know that we're heading in this particular direction, then we can all be rowing in the same direction. And so everything that comes up, we can, we can bounce it back against those things that we all agreed were, were critically important and we can measure them. I think it's very arbitrary to say, I don't even know. Like, and I don't want to say the squishy goals, because I'm not trying to demean anybody's goals. But how will we know that that has been accomplished? How will a taxpayer know? How will a parent know that it's been accomplished at any, at any point in time?
Well, you can look at things you supported in the budget and policy, and things that you can control. So like, I want to increase community engagement. We hired a team to audit our communication program. We encourage public speaking, we, you know, like you, you can look at things that you approved in your policy and budget goals.
Are we trying to improve something? So like, when you say improve communication, what, what does that mean? How, how could everybody in town go, yes, communication has been improved? You know what I mean? How do we do that?
You know, when you guys were in the front of the room at the kid at night, right? Where you can say, you know, this is what we did this year. This is what we approved and this is what was important to you at the board and this is what we approved in our budget.
Mm-hmm.
A math specialist, communications audit program, you know, superintendent, um, clear superintendent requirements and evaluations.
But isn't the math spec, so I, I hear you and I agree on the communication piece, because that is also, that's, can be quantified, but probably not worth the effort of quantifying. We're talking about surveying the whole town, how you feel about, right? So I figured that one. But the math specialist piece, doesn't that come from being a desired, quantifiable outcome?
I think you're metro-norming it.
Could be, and that's what I'm trying to get, that's what I'm trying to, yeah, so, I mean, I apologize if I'm dragging this up, it's something to be processing, I love, it might be.
Yeah.
But I just, I also, you know, one of the things that I know that you and I and Eric heard when we went through, not this, recent election, the last one, was very loud from the community, how are we measuring the academic progression of our kids? Not necessarily success, you know, we, the parents were like, you know, I, I got to get my kid a, you know, scholarship to Harvard, it's not that, it was just progression, because there was a perception, and a lot of it was COVID-inflamed, for sure. But it brought up legit questions that there was a perception of, I don't know whether or not my, my child is progressing. And I think some of that was, was, some of the timing was aligned with recent elimination of letter grades, right? So we get to the current three-tier system that a lot of the parents didn't understand. Admittedly, I was in that bucket, you know, but, and so there are some outputs that are on fire. You know, so, and, and as kind of the, the counterfactual to that is, if last year Kate, Kate had said, our reading and writing is horrible, we need reading and writing specialists. Math were okay on, we would have said, okay, let's do the reading and writing specialists, right? So like, there is, there is data and metrics being presented that we are responding to and putting effort and dollars behind to get a measured outcome as requested, right? So again, I'm also not saying that we're going to come up with goals of a hundred percent of the kids, got to be, because we also, that's not realistic, right? So, but I would argue that some of this, we should have some measurable outcomes. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, the administrat, the local administration, as we've seen, is using data sets. And, you know, at some, and, and at some point, those data sets are also going to just help us make good decisions, right? And that's part of the reason, I would imagine, because I wasn't on this conference, but I would imagine it's part of the reason why I ready was selected, because it is measurable, it is quantifiable. We know that educating kids using that tool will, A, must have some data somewhere saying it's a good tool, right? Because we, we know you guys know what you're doing. So you made the right decision, say, this is a good tool, we put this in place. Well, how was data driven the decision? And that tool is now outputting data that we can use, okay, what else do we need? Do we need more math specialists? Or are we okay with what we have? Should we pivot to reading and writing? Should we, so my sense is that somewhere in there, again, being that academics has to be the number one, if not top two, I imagine, of requirements for parents in our community, for our schools. Isn't that stuff quantifiable? Isn't it measurable?
I, I, I struggled with this, with my goal, because I felt, I can see both sides of it. But for me, it goes back to, I, we have to be following metrics from, from you, from the district, from what Kate and Kate, but there also needs to be an outside.
Reference.
Reference. And that, and because when I looked at, and I was using data from the slideshow that she presented in the fall, when I looked at that data, there was a pretty big discrepancy between the state testing scores and what SMS was saying. And that, that's hard for me to see. There has to be some like check, a check and balance, basically, right? Like, and so that's where I'm struggling with this, with that, I guess. But I don't know what, I don't really know what the right solution is either for that.
I also like the state test, I don't like the state test. I'm not a state test, I'm not, that's not what, what I'm about. However, it does give a perspective outside the district, right? So you're saying we're using in-district stuff, and that's great. I mean, I think there are schools that are like us, I think Exodus probably like us. I think Newfields is small, I think Kensington is small, I'm not, right? But they're a little bit different than us, whereas state testing gives us the ability to at least say, how are you doing relative to somebody else across a, a fairly normed test? Now, whether it's the right stuff that we're testing for or whatever, whether we're teaching to the test and that's wrong or whatever, at least it gets us outside of just the SAU. I mean, it gives us the perspective of being able to say, like, I mean, I looked it up. I had, and I can, I'll, maybe I'll pass something around for people to look at. But like, if you look at like Little Harbor in Rye, or in Portsmouth, if you look at Rye, if you look at, um, there's one out in Hanover, similar, similar size, similar demographics, similar everything, right? Like, that gives us the ability to actually take that data and kind of look. And if other folks are doing well, or maybe we're doing well, or whatever it is, we can say, well, what are you doing differently? Not that that's, not, you know, and I think this, like, the idea of falling short of a goal, that's, nobody's, I don't think anybody's like, oh, let's punish everybody and self-flagellating kind of thing. It's just, hey, we didn't quite get to where we are, why? What's that gap about? Is it something we should worry about? Is it something that we should bolster, provide policy, budget, all the things that you need? You guys come up with the great ideas, bring them to us and we'll, we'll try, we'll try them, let's try them. But let's be talking about those.
Yeah, I think the goal, the internal board goal then would be like quarterly checks or, you know, twice a year, or three times a year, having a discussion and check-in about where we, we are at versus other places, state or locally. So that we, the, the internal board goal is that we say we're going to check in about those things and then have those conversations.
I agree, but what's the outside the board goal? What's the goal for the district? I see those as two different things. I, I, I just can't give up on the, on that notion. Nobody's explained to me that that is not what that three oh three shall statement says.
So you don't think what we did tonight satisfies, I mean, I thought what we did tonight as a board was incredibly appropriate, right? That we said to them, we want to look at the data, we looked at it in the fall, we want to look at it again.
Right.
We want to talk to you about, you know, I know you're going to show me all this good news, but what's the bad news and where are you going with this? And all of those amazing questions you ask. I think that is the role of the board. And I think that's something we can control. I wish all these parents had stayed for that presentation. And I, I felt very comfortable and happy with the way that we carried that out tonight.
Yeah, I was well pleased with it as well, but I think that's the maintenance, that, those are the check-ins that you're doing when you've said, academics is super important to us. I ready assessment is, is an important metric that we're going to follow. So every, every meeting, we'd like to have an update on where we're at from an I ready perspective.
That's the goal then. Every meeting we will have.
So that wouldn't be attainable, because you would do it diagnostically three times a year.
Yeah, you know, but you're going to get the sense of what I'm saying.
So that sheet I gave you, right? If you look at it, you're getting state testing scores in September, you're getting mid-year checking in February, and you're getting a yearly data comparison in June.
Right.
You are getting it three times a year.
I don't want my kids to have it every week.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. But it does have the capability to do quick check, but so you're right. So the way that we did it, because it's very similar, you, because your, your discussion today was awesome. That's what you should be doing as a board, pushing back, what's going well? And then what didn't you see that you'd want to see for next time? Like, I, I think Jennifer said, I want to see kids from this year in third grade compared to where they were at second grade. Did they make that overall growth or are we still stagnant and why?
Part of the thing, when I was looking at other board goals, because I was just, was curious what other districts are doing, a lot of them, and I think Portsmouth is one of them, they had like their own strategic plan, they had a vision statement, and then the yearly goals were working towards that vision. And that's something that made way more sense to me than every year sitting here and like trying to reinvent, like, let's say, who are we, what are we doing, what are we striving for? And then the yearly goal should work towards that. So like, for example, I know in the past, this board, I wasn't on the board at the time, but they were very adamant about small class sizes. They were very adamant about making this feel like a private school experience and that Stratum is its own school and we can kind of do what we want to do and how we want to do it. So if we want to create a vision statement or something to that effect, and then the yearly goals drive that. So it's, it's easier, it's easier to set your goals when you already know what you're working towards. You know what I mean? It's like long-term, short-term, I guess. Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
But that was just one of the things I had thought about when, I don't know, it might, it might help this process.
Are you saying that you, that those goals are articulated though?
Some of them are.
Or is it like a moving target that we articulate every meeting?
No, you set your yearly goals, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And where do you articulate those and where are they placed? Are they like, do we?
Some of them are right on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Is it a check, like, yes, we did this or yes, we didn't? Some of them were, and some of them were incredibly like, how are you going to meet it? Who's involved in the process? You know, when are we checking in on this? It was, it was very, some of them were so loose and others were completely tight. Like, every little thing had been thought about. I wish I brought some of them, but I don't know, I, I'm just wondering if that would help us. Because I feel like the last time we created goals, it was kind of.
Squishy?
It was like, when nobody really agreed and, you know? So it's a tough thing to do.
It is, because I also, I don't, I don't want to be, you know, to Eric's point, without you punching people, we want to be overly constrained. We just, I think, you do want to make sure we're just zeroing in on, we're zeroing in on people things we want to accomplish. And the benefit of, that keeps everything kind of focused. I thought tonight's conversation was fantastic. I, I love that data from the subject. But then that also says to me, if we have that data, why aren't we setting a goal to it? Right, so, and, because we have it and we can work to it and we can do something. And, you know, to Eric's point, we're going to miss, there's going to be years we're going to miss, right? There's going to be years where, it was a really bad flu year, and so a bunch of kids were out, missed a bunch. And so instead of, and again, I'm throwing numbers out there, so please don't take anything that I'm saying as an actual proposal, right? But, you know, well, we were, proposal was, we wanted ninety percent proficiency in I ready. We hit eighty-five percent because, I don't know, whatever, whatever, good reason. That's okay too. I think it's, the, the goal is, the goal is more important not to haggle over, you know, did we get eighty-eight instead of ninety or eighty-five? It's that the goal is, you know, hey, for whatever reason, we're off to a really slow start this year. How do we address it, right? Or the goal is, hey, we're noticing in third grade, a lot of kids are struggling with these topics. We're worried about them in fourth grade, let's start lining up resources to support them on these fourth grade topics. Right, but I, I'm worried that we can't have that point-in-specific actionable response without having metrics to look at.
Well, wouldn't the goal then just be a hundred percent? Like, why wouldn't, isn't that the default goal? You know, like, a hundred percent, that's what we want.
But I think it goes to your SMART thing, it's like, is it realistic?
Yeah.
I mean, these incorporate special, special education as well. I mean, there's stuff where I just don't think, and if you, if you kind of norm it across other Eric schools, I think we'll find that nobody, a hundred percent is just not a normal, it's not a, it's not attainable at all. But I think it's like a performance standard. It's almost like a performance standard where you're just saying, hey, this is the standard by which I think we should be performing. I don't know.
Yeah, I guess to me, it feels like a little bit moot, because like, they're doing, they're doing their best and if they see areas that are weak, like, that's the discussion to address that. And I'm not sure, I'm just not sure that putting a goal on top of that would necessarily help.
That's part of the challenge, I mean, that we do have a great administration. And so when you look to put, when you look to put hard goals on there, there's in some way, sometimes it can be interpreted as, well, I trust the administration. But we need to separate, we need to separate good practice and what goals we're meant to accomplish from. I mean, I, I agree with you, we know that the administration we have is great. They're doing everything they can, right? We've seen the, the response and recovery from COVID. This is not about, this is not about judging the administration that we have, it's just, what's the right practice? And so actually, so I'm really intrigued by Kate, what you said. You know, do we have that longer-term vision statement and the goals become a part of that? Right, because again, I want to be careful, you know, my drive to have numbers is not to ask judgment. It's not to question people's performance, it's to really focus and zero in on what's important. And it makes it easy that when we're doing a budget and we have to make some sacrificial decisions, we already know what our priority is, right? And we don't have to get into, as we're careening in the budget time, right? And things never go as fast as we want and we're snowplowing all this work that needs to be done in January, having those set goals makes it really easy to zero in on, okay, this is what we said we wanted to accomplish.
Does the board, New Hampshire Board Association have toolkit to help boards develop goals and long-term goals and short-term goals? Like, is there a template that we can go off of or a training that we can go off of that would help us do this? Because it seems like we're not, this is not the first time.
I mean, they do have a book that offers suggestions, I mean.
She hasn't got that yet.
Yeah.
Is it yours yet? Sophie, right, yours on?
Oh, I, I've got it, yeah, I'm.
They have a whole thing on setting goals.
They'll, they'll give you ideas of what goals you should, you should write based on your role, but a specific template, not really, because it's, every board is different.
Best practices, yeah, something, I mean. All right, where do we want to go here? Yeah. I also have two that I haven't. Oh, do you want to share those so we can? Yeah, one of my goals is for every board member to follow one grade per year. So for one day, each board member, or one, one day per year, each board member follows one grade.
You mean just like their day, day in the life?
Yeah, day in the life. And then my other goal would be to do one DEIJ training or workshop in conjunction with the. the SMS and district DEIJ coordinators. That's it.
So I know we want to have an education goal, that's, yeah, for sure.
New Hampshire's goal, I do think, if we're starting to stake some ground, which is what I think you're trying to do, I do think we have to have objectives around, you know, relative to some of the things here with the, to build these facilities.
Yep.
That's.
That's a huge one.
That's a huge one. We have to have.
So it should probably be.
That's coming. So we have to have something.
Of facilities, yeah.
Yeah, facilitating that effort.
Mm-hmm. We usually have, or there has been in the past, a communication plan or communication goal. Is that something that people feel strongly about? I'm just trying to set, like, what are the topics we want?
I think that was something else we heard in the lab.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Last lecture.
Okay. So academic facility.
Talk about squishy, right?
Well, that one's going to be, right? The communication plan is going to be squishy. And I think that there's, because always going to have people complain and, here, I didn't know, it wasn't right. So I think that one, that one, we just do the best, right? You know, we want to focus on, we want to put.
Well, honestly, like, I feel like this is so valuable.
Do you?
And that's the key to communications, you know? Everybody complaining about these student-led conferences should have come to that thing where they talk about. You know, I think that those communications are.
And this is something that will be, obviously it will be on the agenda, but can this be public?
Yeah.
So people, sometimes people are like, well, I didn't think to look at the agenda a week before, I wish I had known like three weeks prior or whatever.
Yeah, we approved it in our first board meeting, September.
So that could just be like right out there.
Yeah, this is what we're talking about, and if we make a switch, we make a switch, but it's under that principal report every.
Okay, that's a good idea. Okay.
What do you guys think about enrollment and the board's role depending? A little bit, what I've been thinking a lot about is, you know, CMS is facing a decline in enrollment. How much of that comes from SMS, right? We have kids in fifth grade, honestly, almost every child I know.
I am, I, yeah, I'm hearing the same thing.
And why, you know, coming out of fifth grade, coming out of SMS and this experience we've had here, why? I just wonder if we have a role in that? And I'm curious what you guys think.
Well, we are going to be doing an enrollment study this year, correct?
Yep.
So that will be.
I don't really know what that is.
So you can explain that probably better than anybody, like, looks at projections down the road, yeah.
Coming into SMS?
Yes.
Does it interview parents and say, like, why are you coming out of SMS?
I don't, no. It's more like how many years out, do they see numbers? Yeah.
Yeah, it looks at where you're, if you have building going on in your town, number of people currently and the age with children of school age, and then projecting what's coming in. So, what are school age entry kids coming in and leaving?
But I think that that will, it will give us some valuable information, but we could either tie that into the facility goal, or is this something that needs to be its own thing?
Like the enrollment or the CMS?
The enrollment, the enrollment goes hand in hand, I think, with that question.
Because I don't know.
I don't know if that's, I don't.
You have to do enrollment for the building project.
Right. That's what I heard, that's what I heard. I knew what your tech was, but that's not what I heard.
Yeah, I think it's a separate issue.
Maybe it is then, yeah. If you're saying it, because it's people leaving after fifth grade.
Right.
Yeah.
But we're down too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're down too.
We're down like, we're down, I think, I have it, it was like 19% since the high watermark. I didn't see that. This was like from 2011, it's been down. It's been down for a while.
It's in the board packet.
Yeah, I got it. Well, I mean, it's in the board packet for, it's like 505 or something, but we were, we were 600 for a while, like in that ballpark, until about 2012, 13, 14. And then there was a decline, and it's kind of been a fairly steady decline.
Are you looking back 10 years?
Oh, I'm 2008 to 2022. Here, share it with you. And then there was a dip around COVID, I got it along. But I mean, I think it's a concern because you'll see in my packet why I did, or why what I was looking at, was I was looking at, well, what is budget?
Yeah.
I mean, it start, when you start here, I'll, do you want to look and just pass it along or something?
Yeah.
But, you know, it was one of those things where it's like, even if you do COLA adjusted, when we were thinking about budgets, and we knew that we had like an 8% cost of living adjustment that was just determined, that kind of worked, but as you keep going down, the cost per student, I mean, yes, there is something that we do from a faculty staffing perspective and numbers, I mean, we know that, but there are these other sunk costs or fixed costs that are, that are just part of run in this place, that as that goes down, the cost per education of student, per student.
Yeah.
Goes up. And I think that, I honestly think that the people who care, that come out to vote about these things are the people that look at the budget, look at the enrollment, look at the state testing.
Very deliberate.
Right? So when we go to the Warren article in two years, and I said this, and you know, and we're on, I think we're similarly thinking about this, that we're going to have to go make these, we're going to have to make an appeal, because if we don't get that, we have to go figure out all of the other capital expenditures for all of this stuff here, if the town doesn't go for it. And that's one of the reasons why I'm so hard on like, let's get some goals out there that the community agrees with.
Three square foot, eight, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, nobody's going to want a second gym and the two wings and all this stuff if we're at.
But they're still going to want the second gym.
Yeah, they want the second gym, exactly.
Not the students, but for the adults.
Yeah, for the adult basketball afterwards. But anyway, that, that's it. I mean, that's, here, I'll just share with you, Chris. Just so you, I don't want you.
So what would a goal look like around enrollment, I guess? I don't even know how to.
And that's not even, the enrollment was on the second or third.
On how are we accountable to it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think anybody cares. Like, so when I sent my oldest to private school in sixth grade during COVID, because I needed her to be in school, nobody cared.
Nobody cared about what?
Nobody reached out and asked me why. You know what I mean?
Oh.
It was, yeah, I would have looked to have talked to somebody. And it's funny, when I talked to, like, why are people applying the same paths and stuff, you know, I don't think people really know. I think they just think it's more academically arduous. And, yeah, I just think, couldn't there be some outreach in fifth grade? And I guess, okay, so, you know, I contradicted you with, like, is that an adequate board goal? But couldn't there be some kind of like climate culture study? Couldn't there?
What are you trying to stop with SMS problem? It's CMS problem.
I think that, so people are going to think.
Keep it if you want.
But it's because they felt somewhat unfulfilled at SMS, don't you think?
I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's a, that's a.
Well.
I think so.
Do other schools do, do that? Call families when they leave? Like, is that, like, I'm just curious, like?
Some do, but it's a lot easier when you're in Newfield, which I live in, and there's 20 kids leaving to have a conversation than there is with 100, right?
Right, yeah.
But we just, I mean, it's not part of this, but there is some of the culture going into sixth grade, and that's what we've heard, because we did, we did during COVID, when we talked about doing a sixth grade academy, because we heard the culture was so bad. So we actually interviewed, last year, we interviewed 11th and 12th graders during advisory that were at CMS to talk about that, and they said, yeah, we stayed here because, or we had people leave because, and then we reached out to some people that have been private since sixth grade, why did they leave? Culture was a big, big conversation. So that's been a goal of us at senior leadership, how do we build that back? Right? And part of it's communication, part of it's, you know, how the administration's changing that now. So that's been a focus, and that's why we hired the person we did to try to address that.
Yeah.
Are they coming back to Exeter High School, Chris? Because I feel like that's probably, you probably see a bump back up.
So I think there's a culmination of different things over the last 10 years. You've seen a lot more schools open up, both charter and private, so that, there's more options for families. So, and a traditional high school doesn't always work. We know that, right? So with other options, you're seeing reduction. We're not seeing as the populations of our kids we did 10 years ago, so that's a huge part. There's not as much growth for places being built, right? So those factors go in, and that'll be part of the enrollment, that they'll tell you that. But it depends, there's families that have moved back in from private school, like, what was I doing? You know, the private experience wasn't as good as I thought, and so I'm coming back. So it's really individually based.
I just feel like there's a cultural thing, though, with middle school, just because it's a hard time. Your kids just went from kind of being little kids to all of the challenges that come with adolescence and all of, it's a whole new world. And then I think, maybe they get their heads wrapped around it a little bit more, and maybe they come back and, that's why I was wondering if there was anecdotal evidence that people are, would return to Exeter, but, because that would maybe point more to cultural and just child development and things like that. It sounds like maybe we don't, anyway, sorry, I don't want to get on.
No, no.
What are there, we had a 20% of people left in 12th grade.
Right. It seemed to imply that.
Let, do, let's just work on one goal right now. Let's work on the communication one, because that seems like that might be an easier one. Do you want to do that? Does that sound like a good idea?
So are we going to try and get some goals tonight and then do a bigger picture thing? Or like, what's our process?
Well, what we've done, what we've done in the past is, we've usually knocked them all out in one workshop, but I think it took a couple hours. But we could split this up, we could decide we want to come up with a bigger vision plan and meet to do that first. We can do whatever we want. So what are people thinking? I think that we do need to get this done, though, because it's been way too long.
Do we want to, like, set some shorter term goals and then commit to a longer term process that would get us further? Or, like, are other people excited about the long-term, like, mission statement, kind of five-year picture and then build back from that? What are the goals that we, really, and this is like values, you know, like, what are our, what are the things that we value the most in this community, that then we can pull the long-term picture on, that we can then pull the goals? So it's like, we kind of have to go way up to come back down for it to make sense.
Right.
But I understand that we're not going to do that tonight, so.
I don't know, anybody?
I don't know. I mean, the bigger picture stuff might be easier in some ways, you know? I mean, I don't know. Doesn't matter to me, anyway. I'm ambivalent.
Kirsty, you have any thoughts?
I love your idea of that long-term picture, writing your vision of what it is, because I think your goals fall underneath that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we should work on that right now, then. Let's do that. So why don't we pick, okay, so we know, like, everybody throw out what their, what you think the top priorities would be, like, academic. You know, let's throw some words out, and then we can kind of go from there to see what we're coming up with. Does that sound, well, long-term, okay, an easy one, long-term, would be to put the facilities, you know, have a school that's adequately sized for, you know, so that would be part of that, I feel like. And then there'd have to be an academic piece, you know, what are our students, what do we want our students leaving here looking like? You know, that type of, I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out there, but.
I think there has to be a financial piece.
Yep.
You know, in terms of, I was thinking a lot about, you know, if that were a failed, what is our, I mean, this responsibility? You know, if you got to place corners and windows and.
Sort of fiscal responsibility, that's not a bad idea. If we start demonstrating that.
Yeah, we'd try to build that up. And then less.
Build that up for the next couple of years, yeah.
Do we need a whiteboard?
Portsmouth had a really good outline of how they did it, yeah.
I can try.
I feel like it was Portsmouth. Okay, so building, financial piece, obviously, what are, like, a vision for what we want the students to leave here looking like academically, like, that would be probably, right?
Academic rigor, maybe is. Student first, I don't know if that's, like, we put our students first.
I think what else did I, trending in the other roles that we saw, planning? So data, how about, like, data-driven, right? Like, we've all mentioned that.
I think it's evidence-based.
Evidence-based.
That's kind of the way I think about it, you know what I mean? It's just more evidence-based. I mean, I don't know if everybody agrees with that word, but that was, just came to mind. Is it the mission statement? Like, this is the main website.
Oh, gosh, I'm trying to remember. I think it was under board goals, I think it was under board goals, that they have board, school board goals.
Nice.
See, they have a strategic plan.
Okay.
So, and then they go down the line of how they're going to, it was pretty extensive.
So then what if you have elections next year? I don't get reelected, somebody comes in, they're like, you think that means responsibility should be zero? Then what happens to this long-term strategic?
You stop inviting them to the meeting.
Maybe it can be, I mean, maybe those are broad, more broad and, not vague, but more broad, where it's like, more, it's more around like, we value fiscal stewardship or, I'm trying to think of words, right? And measurable or whatever, you know, somebody's just like two or three-word concepts. And then, no? You have a furrowed brow again?
Well, so, again, I'm thinking about what we've heard, let's go simple. What have we heard loud and clear from the community? Loud and clear from the community is, has been fiscal responsibility while still providing for the needs of our kids with pretty much whatever it is the administration thinks they need, right? But the reality is, we haven't heard, if there's been a well-articulated argument for resources, we haven't had an objection from the community, right? So it's been, it's been fiscal responsibility while providing for our kids and communication.
Those are, I would say, the top three.
Those have really been the three big things. Like, we haven't had, because even when we've had incidents of community members objecting to something, whatever it is, there has also been satisfaction from the community member being able to come here or do a fireside chat with Kate or whatever, have an open dialogue have an open dialogue about why something's being done. And the community member, from what I've seen in general, has come back and said, yeah, I, I may not agree, but the points were articulated well and there were data back and so I can argue. Or it's been, hey, at least that was heard. You know, you know, I think, you know, to your point about, you have left, you know, and my data says half a dozen maybe have left, not going to CMS. But the, but of that small population, it was overwhelmingly, not just that the schools were closed because of COVID, it was, I don't understand why. Why are we closed? Because other schools aren't. Right? So it wasn't so much that we were closed, it was, I don't understand why and I can't figure it out and no one's listening to me. So I think that's the communication piece. Right? So like, I feel like if we, if we're going to set these values that address what the community wants, it's, it, it has been those, those three things. Academic rigor, fiscal responsibility and communication. Right? So then can we build those values around that? And then that'll trickle down into specific goals over, you know, what else? I think anything past five years is just guessing. I don't think getting out the past five years. So, but if, and then if we look into that window of five years, we know for a fact this building is coming. Look at you, you're in the committee, you're starting the building. Right? The building's coming, so it has to be a goal.
Yeah.
Has to be, it has to be a concrete goal of, we need this expansion relative to the enrollment study, right? We are using data, right? We have this enrollment study coming, the expansion has to match this. So we have to have a building designed relative to the enrollment study and we have to secure funding from the town. Those are all goals that we can put.
Long-term, yeah.
Long-term actionable goals. You know, I do think the communication one is going to be question because that is subjective, right? There are going to be plenty of people that just, whatever we do doesn't matter. So I think that at least if we have a goal of making sure that we have, you know, a board member working on it, on that committee, making some, that's, that's going to be one that may not have a goal that's at the end. That one might be, you know, in in process, but we look, it is part, it is part of this board. We always have one member working on communication improvement because that's not really going to be, that's all right. So then I think, you know, that alone, that's two goals. That I think, again, from my perspective, and I'm happy to debate, but that's what I've heard. So then I think, you know, around the academic rigor, you know, it's, I kind of opened some of this with my questions. I'm not sure how to develop that academic rigor, but I think that is something that, that parents want to hear from. So, you know, how do we develop that academic metric? What is it? Is it strict already? Is it state test? And I'm not voting for any one of these, I just, but I think that's our next step is how do we figure out what an acceptable and useful academic rigor metric is? I feel like the other two are kind of defined already for us. Right? I mean, again, we've heard, we've heard the town complaining about communication for years now and the building's coming. So that's like inarguable, right? There's almost no point, those, those two have to be, have to, have to be goals for us. Right? So then if we kind of focus on, all right, well, how do we figure out a good metric for academic rigor? One that's not too constraining, one that's relevant, one that's not, you know, difficult to understand using the data we're already collecting. I feel like that's a lot of the way there for us.
What about fourth, I'm still thinking about how we're expanding our budget here. What about superintendent, right? With this brand-new superintendent? Do we, as a board, you know, one of our jobs is to evaluate.
In what way can you expand on that?
Like to ensure superintendent's activities promote and foster.
But isn't that a joint board? Would that be, that would be a joint board.
Yeah, because that's the one employee, the joint board.
There was one on this Portsmouth one that was, another one was around student wellness. I don't know if we want to do that. And it said, establish baseline indicators for social and emotional learning at each level and expand strategies for supporting all learners for success in schools. These strategies will include trauma-informed school-wide systems of support to improve the mental health substance, prevention, and overall wellbeing of all Portsmouth students. I just, when I heard student wellness, it, it's, it sounded like it was a little more holistic, just about like behavior and all kinds of things could go into that. You know, like physical health and, you know, food and nutrition, all of these things could kind of go into some of that. So I didn't know, I just thought, that's not, we do hear a lot about, that is another big.
That goes to being student first, which is something I hear from Kate and Kate a lot.
I don't know, it's just like a kind of a vision category of that. I just, they did a pretty good job of that. Describing it.
Okay, so right now I have building goal, a communication goal. Somehow coming up with an academic one that we feel comfortable with the, with the metrics or whatever. And then this possible, the student wellness encapsulating.
Do you think the financial, the fiscal responsibility one is a separate thing or is it just a part of these others?
I'm wondering if that could be part of the building, I don't know. Yeah, I know.
Balance the budget, we have to balance the budget.
Yeah.
What if you return, what if you return per student spending levels, inflation-adjusted to a previous time? Like, why does, why does that number just need to keep going up and to the right? I mean, potentially it could with inflation, I get that, you know, I understand some of that stuff, but. I don't know, and I'm not saying that we should do it, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there as there are ways to look at that. It just.
We had four goals.
Or as a proportion to enrollment or something.
It's just a step by the SF plus budget versus the town budget, right?
Yeah.
The town was at 2%.
Oh, I know. Well, so old business, one of the old business things that we had discussed was getting David Moore to come in to talk from the town on what they did around.
I have that on here.
And alternative health plans that are really appealing and attractive, actually. That could be something that we could do, but it would be, it could certainly be in response to a larger goal around financial stewardship, right? But I'm not saying it needs to be, I'm just saying, I know that, I know that people in the town care about how we spend those dollars. So it, it's an idea.
I think.
But now we're at like five or six, or like how many, we're going to have like 10 things, I don't know. You know, I mean, that gets to be untenable. I mean, humans can concentrate on like two or three things, right?
Well, the thing that I always discuss with my front porch and the porch is that leftover money. You know, I recognize it's 179,000, that's not as much as it's been in the past years, but, you know, four years ago, they just built Shen. Or, you know, it's just like, let's just build Shen. It's going to be both of the budget costs or anything, but I think we could do something with stewardship and that kind of money.
Okay, so I'm, so I'm only at four goals unless I'm missing one.
Is stewardship as a financial?
Like a financial responsibility?
I just put that down, yeah, that's four.
That's the fourth?
Mm-hmm.
I would hesitate to add anymore fours. Those are also, let's not kid ourselves, these are.
Big.
Oh wait, but we don't have the, we don't have the academic one, I didn't put, so that, that would be five.
That makes sense. And then we're going to have sub-goals that are like actually measurable, smart goals underneath those for us. Those are like our broad vision and then it's like, okay, what are we actually doing this year? We're all feeling a little brain-dead and tired.
I don't know where to go.
Are those our goals or maybe those are our value statements?
Yeah, that's what I think.
The value statements, yeah. So we need to come up with a statement around each one, like, right?
Or we could just say, like Portsmouth calls them guiding pillars. Guiding pillar, one, two, three, four, five. I think if, you know, even if we come to agreement that those are like.
Yay. Wow, we're making such good progress here.
More paper, hang on. All right.
Guiding pillars, goals. Do we want to set a goal, goals for the end of this year or the end of?
It's usually the whole, so it'd be.
School year.
April next year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or whenever we finalize it? Okay, academic, building, communication. We, we are going to put student wellness?
I'd, I'm, I think so.
I like it.
And financial surgery, okay.
Because I think that will get into like some of the behavioral things and the almus, like these are things we talk about all the time.
Okay.
No?
No, I, yes, I agree with when you start talking about food and discipline and all that. I mean, I think. Yeah, I just think SEL is something they already focus on.
Yeah.
So I would want to kind of specify within SEL what we're talking about.
I do worry SEL is out of our purview because it's so specialized and it's so individual.
And we think this is so much hiring for.
Yes. I mean, they provided good metrics on it. I think there's, I think devil's in the details to me on some of that stuff too.
Yeah, well, that's our, one of our pillars is wellness and then our goal doesn't have to be about SEL. Sounds like that's checked off right now, so that's maybe not what we're going to need to focus on.
Okay, so do we want to pick one and try to make, let's pick an easy one to get us rolling and try to.
I mean, facility seems like it could be a fairly, like what's the achievable building?
Smart goal, yeah.
Yeah, isn't the time scheduled for the zone we set for is coming up?
Yeah. Yeah, and the, well.
Funding, I know that we're.
Per-state funding, yeah.
I know that we're kind of not super confident going out for it. We know we have to apply for it.
Yeah.
So I think right, right away that gives us some thinking about.
I think we also have to pull in, you know, assuming we have to open this up to more people.
Yeah.
So, you know, bringing in.
Maybe that's, that's a good, yep. So. Do we know about when we're going to do that? I can't remember on your, that you had a time sheet, was that like, it was after we secured the?
Yeah, so the letter for state funding goes out January and then the application itself goes out like June.
Okay. So I'm just trying to think if that would fall within this year, yeah.
Yeah.
But we wouldn't be involving community members till closer to that?
Right.
So maybe that wouldn't fit into this year's goal.
Right.
You know, working.
Well, I think you could say something like evidence-based, right? Like looking at what are current, you know, teaching laws, like how we do the classroom, what's the library look like, looking at.
If we create a framework and then we also create sort of the way we want to look at it? Like what our criteria is for determining goals, could we just like, could we take time to think about it? And do this like more specific stuff, like, or is it, or do you guys feel like we need to do it? And I'm not trying to say one way or another, I'm just like, my creative juices are like, aren't super great at the moment? And I feel like it was hard enough just to get like, what do we consider to be?
I think that's a good idea. Why don't we each take one of these things, but let's talk about how we want. Or I don't know, like you, you should probably take building, right? Because you're.
You're involved in them?
I don't know, is that a good idea or no?
Anything. It was almost like, you know, we took it away and we said, well, let's come up with some goals. We all came up with some things or we thought about it and then we provided them. Now I think we even have a better, we've kind of bounded it a little bit better.
Yeah.
You know, and we've had great discourse, I think, about.
All right. Who wants to take what?
I like student.
You want to do student wellness?
Student wellness, yeah. Excited about that.
And is it okay if we like do more than one? Can we contribute more than one?
There's three left over, they're all yours.
I don't want to be responsible for a goal. I just want to like, I wouldn't even mind contributing like across all of them just to say.
No, I think that.
Whatever, if you want ownership, I appreciate that.
We can't do a Google document, would that be quorum?
I can share a Google document.
No, would that be quorum though, for all working on it?
You're not making any decisions.
Maybe we should do that. And everybody.
If I'm the creator of it though and I'm sharing it out with you, put your input, I own it, you don't.
Okay.
And then I can transfer it to Esther to bring back to the next meeting, so then you can see what's, what's happening.
Do we want to do that?
Okay, I personally like that idea.
Yeah, then we can workshop and.
It's workshop, we have to balance it.
So that's what I've been creating right now. You're like, you're telegraphing.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And it's, we're not going to, it's eight o'clock, or is it eight o'clock? Yes. We're not going to get too much farther, I think, at this point, so. But it is a good start, I mean, we have to have these conversations.
Can we, can we just vote to get rid of all the old board goals, please?
All right, so I think that's a good idea.
Are we assigning though? It doesn't, not matter.
I think we could just all kind of, just all do it. Or, does that sound reasonable or do people want to kind of stick to one? I mean, no.
I kind of feel like sticking to one each makes sense to be the person like proposing language and then everybody puts feedback just so like, we're.
All right.
We're all proposing language around.
Okay.
Them, unless one person wants to propose language around all of them and then.
Any thoughts? All right, so you'll take student wellness? What do you guys want?
I'm going to be thinking about them anyway, right? So I'm going to come with my thoughts.
I feel like you could be the.
But I could take one.
The academic one.
Yes.
I, I can, but everybody knows I'm highly opinionated about some of that, so I don't.
That's why, that's why we need.
All right, okay.
You want to take financial stewardship?
Oh, sure.
Do you want communication or building, Jennifer? Okay. I'll take communication. All right. I think that's a good plan. So what we'll do is, so let's talk about then, how does this affect May because? Do we want to do another work, do we want to do an actual workshop to, once we get all this done, we obviously need to meet again. I almost think doing it on a, I know we have tons of meetings, but doing it separately than in a meeting, just because, you know, you. They tend to go long and obviously we're all like, can't think straight at this point. So we could do that, do a separate workshop, which is what we've done in the past, that's still public, but, and it's just like an hour or two long. Or we could tack it on to either before meeting or after a meeting.
Well, I'm guessing May might be a busy meeting.
And May's going to probably be busy too. So, but I, I do feel like this is a pretty big priority, like we have to get this done, I mean.
I vote for separate and you vote for a kind of leader.
I vote for separate starting at six, five o'clock is.
Yeah. No, I get that. Do you want to look at dates? When is our May meeting? Is it the 17th?
Yep.
Okay. So. For that, probably. What are good days and times for people?
I think Wednesdays are.
Wednesdays is.
Good for me generally.
So that, there's the 10th. The 3rd, I don't know if there'd be enough time to.
10th works for me.
And Chris, this is, this is you too, right?
So it would be either Esther, I, I have a Kensington School Board meeting. So my Wednesdays are booked because I have new fields in Kensington on those Wednesdays. But I can share this with Esther and Esther will be working with you until June, but I, I'll see the document and just, you know, I'd love to be there, but I don't want to be the holdup. If you all can meet the 10th. Right now Esther does not have anything, that's six o'clock on the 10th. So I'll let her know tomorrow.
Does that work for everybody? No.
Yeah, and we want to meet before the 17th. Is that kind of the goal?
I just figured, yeah, to get things rolling.
Okay.
Works for me.
So just to recap, I'm going to send this out to everybody, everyone's going to take their section, just to put their thoughts in there, try to get some wording complete, come back on the 10th, review it, put other thoughts in there, so you have a working document after the 10th that you can finalize at your, your meeting for the 17th.
And our thoughts like goals, like, what's a thought, like?
A smart goal.
A smart goal?
Or as smart as it can be, right?
Yeah.
And what I would refer you to is your policy BA.
No, no pun.
Because that really talks about board goals and expectations and visions that are in that. And it highlights, I mean, what you're talking about are all parts of what you can be having as a board goal, but that might help you as well.
Okay. Okay, all right, I think I can make it the 10th one. You sure? Okay, because the 17th, we'll have to vote on this to signify, if we're going to, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you just, you want to set it soon.
Okay.
If it's public, we can vote on it that day too, if we want, right?
Oh yeah, could we vote on it in workshop?
Yep, because it's a publicly posted meeting.
And we'll have to do public comment, right, all the stuff.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so, May 10th, 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Do we, and then just back to your point really quick before we close. Do we want to put the, the town thing for the insurance HSAs, what do you want to do with that? Do we need to do that before, talk about it before the summer kick, or no?
I just think, I think it's only fair because David offered.
Yeah.
For me to just see.
Okay.
I mean, or you can as a chair if you want, whatever, but I know he wanted to get access to some information first.
Okay.
And then he may need some time and then he may need to schedule something that's convenient.
Why don't we reach out to him?
Yeah, I can do that, I'll put you on season.
Yeah, and then see what he thinks for timing or whatever. Because Chris, we won't meet in July and August, is that correct, unless something comes up?
It's totally up to the boards, typically you don't, unless you do a retreat. That's where I'll work on my board goals and my boards that I'm with for next year, we usually do a retreat date, just like you're doing.
Okay. All right.
We don't meet during the summer, do we?
Nope.
Usually, unless something comes up, yeah. Hopefully. All right.
All right.
So, we just need to adjourn? Nothing else? Anybody have anything else before we? Okay. And just so, if everybody wants to take a look at that, the Portsmouth, just to kind of get an idea. And there's other boards that are doing the same thing, I've done multiple, so.
When you say Portsmouth, is it Portsmouth High School?
Yes, it was.
If there's a link, could you put it in that?
Yeah.
There's only one school board?
It's called City of Portsmouth.
This board is so unique, how we'd have to do it, but we only have one. The Coister River only has a one.
It's the City of Portsmouth.
Wow, that's crazy.
Yep, and then the school board is right on the main top nav, easy to find, and then it's under that, it says board goals.
All right, so we'll adjourn, uh, I'm trying to time this up.
Eight nineteen?
Eight ten nineteen. Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.